Okay.
Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order. And on the roll call, I see that we've got Darrell, we've got Mark. Karen Casey is with us, Adam Manis is with us. David, I don't see, or?
David is here.
Oh, David, how are you?
Good.
See?
Maybe you can pin us, all us commissioners, to the top.
All right, so we have a quorum, but why don't we elevate Matt? Since he'll be participating.
I'm here, by the way, Wes, I'm here.
Alice, how are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good, good.
Everybody should be elegant, should be pinned, David. So, and you still want to elevate Matt?
So as an introduction, this session is being audio recorded, just like every other PNC meeting. Please be advised that today, we're also recording the videos as well. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting. And we'll keep video of themselves on throughout the meeting. During public hearings, all normal rules, including stating and spelling of your name apply. Please use the chat feature or raise your hand to speak, and you will be recognized. Members of the public may only speak during, in the open public hearing. If a member of the public speaks out outside of a public hearing creates an audio or video disruption, this may be manually ejected from the meeting room upon recommendation of staff or chair. So let's carry on with the minutes of the meeting of January 13th. Have you all read those?
Yes.
The minutes?
Yeah. Adam, was that a?
Yes, that I had read them.
Okay.
I read them.
So we have a motion by David to accept?
I'll second that.
So any discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Meeting minutes are approved.
Um, hey Wes?
Yeah?
Just, um, I'd like to change something on the agenda under nine B. Just that, it's just the monthly financials.
Okay.
So it would be July through January, and I received them this morning, so. I just wanted to make some administrative change to show that they're up to January.
All right, do we need a motion to put that in?
Sure.
Make that motion.
Okay, second. Okay, all approved. So, so where was that? That was under D?
Nine, nine, nine B.
Okay, perfect.
It just, it says July through XXXX. Now it's July through January. Twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any public communications from someone to add? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Five B, one, clarification of baseline and operations and aspirations of Club Getaway. That's been carried over from several meetings. Do we have anybody presenting that?
Yeah, we have both, David Treiber is here, Attorney Dwight Miriam is also here. To, to go over that documentation that had been submitted, and it's in your packet. And I popped everybody off, and now I'm putting them all back on again, my mistake. Okay, so you should all be here now. Um.
Well, you want me to proceed, Mr. Chairman? Good evening.
Good evening, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, thank you. My name is Dwight Miriam. Say for the record, D W I G H T M E R R I A M, like the dictionary. I'm a planner and a lawyer, practicing in Connecticut since I graduated from law school here. And my office is at eighty Latimer Lane in Simsbury, Connecticut. And I've been engaged by Club Getaway to work with your staff and with you in developing a regulatory framework for this use, which has been in town for a very long time. I've visited the site and talked at length, length with David Treiber. I have reached out to my compatriots around the country about how might regulate this type of somewhat unique use. And I researched in some depth regulations all around, in the state of Connecticut and elsewhere, and begun the process of trying to develop a regulatory framework for you. I really, I really like this part of my work. This is a great joy for me to do this. And to work collaboratively, because it's in the best interest of everybody, all the folks in the town of Kent, and this commission, and your staff, and, and Club Getaway to be able to regulate it in an orderly way that eliminates or minimizes any issues over time, allows them to continue to operate in an orderly fashion. You have a long agenda tonight. And, and I, I don't think it's going to be helpful to you if we get into a long discussion on this. So I thought I would offer this to you. And that is, I, I really do think in, in writing regulations, I mean, I've been doing this for forty something years, and I represent commissions, I represent neighborhood advocacy groups, I, I represent developers and property owners, so I see it all. And I really think that, that so much of it is based on definitions. I don't think we do enough in zoning, frankly, on the definitional side. I was teaching a course at UConn Law School, and I kept telling the students, laws and the definitions, you have to have definitions. And we were developing a model zoning ordinance, and I guess I, I might have overstated it because the, the committee that was working on the definitions part of the model ordinance came back with four hundred definitions. And I said, well, maybe that's going a little too far. So if tonight we could, it doesn't require a formal vote, just a sense of consensus to give me some direction and give David some direction as to where we might go, and, and, and we can work collaboratively with Donna Hayes between meetings. But the first thing in that document that I sent along, if you've had a chance to see it, is a, is a definition. And then after that are two other things. The next thing down there that runs the rest of the page and on to the next is potential parts of a regulation that adds some detail to the definition. And I don't think we're going to have time tonight. I don't think it's, it's good use of our time to read it along and discuss it. We'll be here for a very long time if we do that. But that's for your consideration. And then the third part of it is, we've tried to identify all the issues, all the issues that you as a commission might be concerned about, that David Treiber wants to make sure are addressed in a regulation, so that we can remove whatever ambiguities that might come from not regulating enough, frankly. And I, I think we've identified them all. I've looked through a whole lot of regulations and, but I may have missed some, or, so what I would suggest that we do now, just turn to the definition. Let me hear what you think about it. And then, between now and the next meeting, perhaps you can look at the detail underneath that as to how we flesh out that definition, and also take a look at the issues that we flagged as ones that should be in a regulation. And I didn't discuss this with Donna Hayes in advance, so sorry, Donna, for enlisting you on a project, but I think the fastest, the best way to move this along is for you individually, as members of the commission, pass your comments on to her. I'll talk with her, and we'll come up with another document for next month, probably the next month after that, and then maybe we'll be at a point where we'll have a regulation that we can embrace collectively. So, Mr. Chairman, does that sound like a way to proceed at this moment?
I think that's an excellent start, and it's, it's nice to have this organized approach towards it.
So, the definition, you, you are in a rural setting, which is unique for this sort of thing. It is a type of resort. It's not the resorts you see going to the Caribbean, but it's a resort nevertheless. It's that, all around the country, I see this type of activity somehow under the umbrella of, quote, resort, but it's also a conference and educational center. So I picked a name, names are important, but they're not the end-all. Rural Resort and Conference Center. A self-contained development, and then later on, I described what self-contained is. We want this to be able to operate independently. Providing developed recreational opportunities, which they certainly have, entertainment, conference facilities, including the ability to conduct educational programs. And as you know, schoolchildren go there and, and do participate in educational programs. Visitor-oriented accommodations, which are the cabins and the like that are there for people for overnight accommodations, including food service, which is done onsite in a setting with natural amenities, which the site certainly has, in many respects. And then to qualify as a rural resort and conference center, a development must meet the standards of, and then the regulation would cite to another part of the regulation. So this is a definition, goes up in your definition section. And then it refers into a section which would deal with the process of how you review, approve initially, and, and changes to it later. So then below that are the refinements of some of the, some of the language in the proposed definition. Then, as I said, on the, on the next page, trying to identify accessory uses permitted as of right. And, you know, I'm, I'm just guessing at some of these things, frankly. But I'm a believer, I love the book Getting to Yes, The Harvard Negotiations Project. If you've never seen it or read it, it's an old book now, forty, fifty years. And they say, put everything on the table, but be ready to take it off, or to add to it as necessary. That's called, you know, a form of principal negotiation. So I'm thinking of the things that are so routine that you wouldn't want to see them or hear about or care about them. For example, here are the accessory emergency medical facility, the management offices is there, and so forth. And then finally, and we can't get into this tonight, it will be all, we'll be here for two days. The nature of the permitting process and the standards. So what do you think of the definition? I guess I have to ask.
Can I ask you? Where did you find this? Did you make this up out of whole cloth? Did you get it from some other jurisdiction? Where does it come from?
All, all of the above. I read lots of regulations, I read some court cases on interpretation. I'm the co-editor of the only book, I think, of large volume, this is my office, my hands on it quickly, has thirty-five hundred or so definitions in it. I've written with some planner friends, and, and I looked up all the cases for those definitions, so I used that. I did word searches across the country. And I called friends across the country that are in the business of writing regulations. So the answer is, I did all of that. There are bits and pieces here that are certainly words that are used elsewhere, but it is one cobble together, if you will, to directly address what I see on the property, and what David has provided me with a list of all the activities that he does. So.
And I think a Club Getaway, Club Getaway would be happy with this definition.
Yes, I think that this definition fits perfectly with Club Getaway.
Does, does that mean Club Getaway will continue to use the word "club" in its name?
Yes, Club Getaway will continue to use the word "club" in its name.
So I think "club" doesn't coincide with rural resort and conference. A club is a membership, to me. David, maybe you've researched the word "club" along with conference center and rural resort. But I just wonder if the word "club" doesn't imply something that these two things don't address.
The, the name, of course, and David could give you more of the background, but I, as I understand it, it was a, a type of membership organization. But I don't think there's any legal issue with the proprietary name of "club" in Club Getaway. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't change the definition, which in itself does not require a membership. Club may or may not require membership, dues or no dues. You used to have dues, right, a long time ago, David?
I, I don't know, to be, I mean, I believe at one point, part of the, when a guest would register, there was a five dollar membership fee back in the day. But again, this was before my time. And it was, where Club Getaway came from, and the name Club Getaway came from Club Met. And this, it wasn't a name, it was before my time, that, you know, we kept the name just because of brand recognition ten years ago, when we took over. Alice, I would say that.
I was just asking a question, I wasn't.
Good question.
Saying you shouldn't be a club, I get that. It's just that, we're, you know, coming up with resort, conference center, club, there are a lot of different words being thrown out here. I just brought it up, that's all. I realize it is a brand, and we all know it up here as Club Getaway. And, but.
And ultimately, the use would be, the use would be permitted under this definition, regardless of the, of the name of the.
Name, exactly, yeah.
Mr. Miriam, what jumped out at me on the, the definition was simply in that last line that to fit well within our current regulations, that the, that the standard would be a use-related standard. And I wonder whether the, the words "use-related" should precede standards.
Um, that would be fine. I think that would be an appropriate addition, and I will put that in there. There's a consensus that about this magic instrument called a pen, hard to ever use. Use-related standards, and those standards are right there below, so.
And similarly, I would suggest that, that those two words be added. Even though they won't end up in the regulations, I'd say it's really the same.
Thank you.
Everybody's very quiet.
Look, I mean, I, I think this definition has been custom crafted to accommodate Club Getaway, and I have no problem with that, because I think they've done a great job, and I think they've been very attentive to the community issues that have been raised. And I don't know that another facility will ever be able to fit into this definition, and that's fine with me. So if this works for them, I, I'm good with it.
As I said, the definition looks fine, devil's going to be in the details of the next step, so there's a lot of detail to put in place. This I'd be looking forward to seeing the next iteration.
Yeah, there is a lot, you're exactly right, there's a lot of work ahead. And there's a lot of different ways you can go, and, and I look forward to discussing those with you now. If you want to just look down on that page, if you have it available to you there, you'll see that I have a definition, and, and again, I think it would be better if you read it after this evening and gave Donna Hayes your comments on some of the details, and we'll clean it up for next month. And, and hopefully those standards will be done by then. But I define self-contained, I define what a developed recreational opportunity is, which is very much shaped by what Club Getaway has historically and currently does. Conference facilities, we wanted to make sure that there were opportunities for indoor and outdoor meeting places, that they could have interactive learning experiences, particularly for the children, and that they ought to have that in order to do this type of operation. It's a requirement, it's not something that should be left out. And visitor-oriented accommodations, entertainment, and I know we're going to have discussions about that, live entertainment. You know, we want to, we wanted to find everything that we can, and then goes on to the next page, in what live entertainment includes in great detail, and sound amplifier equipment, we'll be talking about sound along the way here, too. So I, I really feel that the best way to help Club Getaway is to put myself in your shoes as well. Dave and I have some discussions about that, so this is as, as open as we could possibly be in terms of anticipating your needs. But if we've missed something, we want to know, because we're going to address them all, we have to. Because the objective is to regularize what's there now, and to minimize or completely avoid any future issues with regard to the operation there. I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to do that with ease together. And I'll leave you, leave you later to the permitting process and standards, your comments to Donna Hayes.
Dwight, how do you see these crafted into our regulations, just as a set of definitions?
No, it's more than that. There'll be these standards, and there, there, there's a, there is a lot to come. I, I don't want to get too far into the details, because David and I haven't flushed them out either. But just that, we're going to have to spend some time, and Donna and I haven't talked about it. I think it's fair to say that, from my conversations that I have had with her, the expectation is that it would be a special permit use. But it's also possible to have certain parts of the B site plan with a hearing or site plan without a hearing. And particularly as to modifications, I think one of the challenges is going to be, what happens if David wants to increase a building size by ten percent? You don't have to come back through a whole special permit, public hearing? I mean, you do, you, you may not, you may want that, fine, if you do, that's where we go. But I, I don't think it's usually necessary. Sometimes we allow incremental changes by site plan without a public hearing, so that you can grab on to something you think is an issue, and, but let the other smaller changes go. So we have to talk about that. And then there are alternatives to a special permit, which might be more advantageous. One of them is called the floating zone. And what I'll do, Donna, is I'll send you an extract from my book, unless you happen to have it on your shelf, The Complete Guide to Zoning.
I do.
You do.
Yes.
Take a look for part on overlay zone. It, it, it might be, it might be better to do that, but we, we can't talk about, we just can't get into that tonight. It's too, a little too complicated. It requires some discussion about how we do it. But that's an important, the procedural, there are two parts to this. The procedural part and the substantive part. The procedural part about what you want to review, and in what way. And the substantive part about what the standards are, what you can approve, and what you have to deny. And we'll get there. But it's, it could, it could be a fairly long regulation, but it'll be tailored to what you need in the long run.
So are you recommending that self-contained, developed recreational opportunities? Are you suggesting that all of those be made definitions that are be, that will be put into the definition section of the regulations as well?
Oh, no, I think, I think the easiest, the neatest way to do it, and as simple as we can do it, is the best way. You have one definition, the definition we just reviewed. That definition refers to section, article, whatever, whatever it turns out to be, which has to do with the approval of this type of operation. Within that separate section of the regulations would be these definitions below, fleshing out the, the, the single definition in the definition section. So, no, it would be, I think I necessarily long to include all those in the definition, but as long as the person reading the definition is then signaled to go to the section dealing with approval of rural resorts and conference centers, then they'll see what else they have to do in order to meet that definition. But that's the easiest, easiest way to do it.
All right, well, I think it has been a good start.
I just had a quick question about the terminology "self-contained." Do you interpret that to be simply on one property or properties owned by a single entity? Does that mean that the facility is somewhat remote and segregated? Does it mean that the impacts are all contained within that venue? How, how did you go about determining that you needed to have self-contained there?
I chose the word "self-contained." David and I spent some time discussing that. It's, it, it should have, obviously, independent supportive infrastructure, whether it's onsite wells and septic or public water, and then maybe later, public sewer provided there. But the main thing was that, when I say "self-contained," the, the notion "self-contained," quote, means having all the necessary physical infrastructure and facilities to operate independently with outside, without outside support. What we don't want to have, what you don't want to have, is a big, open field with wood stock. Okay? That's not a self-contained operation, it can't operate independently. Somebody could get a field and come in and say, I'm, I'm going to be this type of operation. So we want it to be one where they are doing their food service, they're doing their lodging, they're doing all the support onsite, that we don't have large numbers of people coming and going in order to make the thing run. But like I said, the worst-case scenario is a, is a very small operation with a large field, which then becomes a temporary operation. You don't, that's, that's not what this is. So that's why.
I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear that you mentioned the, the septic situation. I didn't want you to be self-limiting in case there was the ability to, to get the club on to the town sewer, in which case it had outside support, but.
Right, well, we talked about that, but that means that, we talked about that, and we know that that's contemplated, but that's, either onsite septic or connected to public sewer still makes it having the necessary physical infrastructure and facilities to operate independently. Bringing in flatbed trucks and porta-potties is not operating independently, okay? So that, that's the thing I'm concerned about from the town's perspective, is to not open the door to something that is not permanent and not able to support itself on a regular, ongoing basis, so.
I assume you're, you're not talking independent of fire and ambulance services?
No, we're not.
Because you mentioned emergency medical facility there.
Well, that, they do have that, and every place like this has to have that, someplace for people to go if they got a, a cut or something, and they need to get a little medical attention from somebody on the site. So that's all that that contemplates. And you, you don't want to be, that's not a use, that's not a principal use, that's accessory to the conference use, and, and they have, it seems to me that the way to handle that is to say, you have that as a matter of right, you need a little medical space, you need an office space, you need a place for your tools or your equipment, you need some storage, you can do that as a right without being a principal use. It's not a principal use. So pretty typical. You know, I appreciate your attention, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You know, I can, I can leave your meeting, I know how long you're going to have to go from here on out, so. You know, I can leave your meeting. I know how long you're going to have to go from here on out, so.
It sounds to me like the applicant is asking that this issue be put over to our next meeting.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, I would like to do that. I mean. We have a consensus on the definition, that's good. I'd ask you to look at the details of how we define that. In the later part and also give us some guidance in the next, before the next meeting. On what you think the things are that we ought to be addressing in detail that are at the end of that. Document that's left with you and I will flesh that out as much as I can do without your input. This is not going to be something. You can see already, this is not something that I can do and give you, you know, let's notice it for a hearing and hold a hearing. We need to, when we get to the hearing part of this. It has to be one where. A collaborative approach. Results in a certainty that you'll be comfortable supporting it at the time of the public hearing. That's my objective. We're not going to draft it and make an application for an amendment, that's. There's too many moving parts of this.
My move that we put this to the next meeting's agenda.
I'll second that.
You're muted, Wes. Wes, you're muted.
Yep. So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, so we'll post, we'll. Hear this at the next regular. Meeting, March 10th, I believe. Am I still muted?
No.
No.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
David, thank you very much and Dwight, thank you very much.
Looking forward to working with you, I really am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
So that was all interesting. I'm. You know, this needs to be crafted towards Club Getaway. I don't want to open the possibility for Kent as a rural resort community. Is.
I agree with that. That's why I asked him. Or I said that it seemed that this definition had been crafted to accommodate Club Getaway, which was funny.
Exactly, exactly.
We can't craft it just for Club Getaway, though. You know. Definition that is broader and right regulation that. That can allow somebody else. To do this, it's not just for Club Getaway.
In reality, Adam, you're right. I'm just, I'm just wondering the path we're going down here. Yeah. So anyway. Well.
I think you have to realize that, you know, this is a change that's going to affect the rural district and if for some reason. Kenmont, Kenwood decides that they want to change, they could become this.
Yes, they could.
So, you know, you just have to understand that. And that's, I think, where you come in when you start talking about. When you start defining. The conditions. You know, it has to be a certain acreage, you know, it has to have this, it has to have that, has to have parking so you can kind of.
Correct. Detail, yeah.
Exactly. That'll be, I think, the biggest discussion.
It has to be a really legitimate operation.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I think it's a great start.
Yeah.
And to Donna's point, we could leverage the use standards, the use-related standards for those camps. To steer our discussion towards. How we want to handle Club Getaway.
Right.
How we want to handle this change.
Right, I mean, it's similar to the farm brewery.
Are we untabling this for discussion?
Well, and we haven't seen a.
Taken a vote yet.
A farm brewery is lined up, have we?
No, not yet.
So is everybody in favor of tabling this to the next meeting?
Did we vote on that? Yes.
No.
The motions, we have to vote on it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye to table. Thanks. So for some reason, I lost contact with Zoom. For about five minutes and then I came back and I lost everything. The audio, yeah, I'm not sure what happened, yeah.
The same thing happened to Alice. So all of a sudden Alice was gone and then I had to bring her back in again, so. Okay.
Okay, so 5B2, this was the letter that you had sent to Board of Selectmen.
I didn't send it. This is the draft of the letter. You guys wanted to see it before I sent it.
Perfect.
Donna, Donna, the fact that it's been posted for a week now almost on the. Public meeting scans.
Yeah.
Is that open to the public?
Yeah, it's open to anybody that has the.
So they have already read, people could have already read this letter.
They could have, yeah. But they have to understand if they read the minutes and understand how the process works, this is a draft.
Okay, so that's important, though, because the last paragraph talks about a. Discussion we haven't had.
Right?
Just want to say. It forces us to have, it forces us to have this discussion.
Yes, because.
But we had a discussion.
You asked us to do that. You asked for this.
No, I did.
But we didn't vote on it.
Yeah. Well, we had the discussion last week and we asked her to encapsulate it into a letter so we could vote on the letter or amend it as appropriate.
Right.
Well. If I can comment. And I apologize in advance, I was not at last month's meeting, so you know, if Farm outvoted, so be it. I reread Regulation 6100. I don't see how you can possibly shoehorn. Food trucks into home-based businesses. The definition of home-based businesses is the use of a portion of a dwelling. I don't see how you can possibly call a food truck as a dwelling. And even if you could, I don't understand how. If we're kicking this back to the Board of Selectmen. If we're using, if we say we can handle this with in Section 6100. We're not really kicking it back to them, we'll say, we'll deal with it.
Yeah.
That makes actually no sense to me. I, to me, I think we should just. Deal with this. And not dodge the issue and we should decide as a Board of Selectmen, a Board of Zoning. That is our charge to decide from a zoning perspective whether we are in support of. Food trucks or not and the majority vote, so be it, but.
Did you listen to any of the conversation?
I did not. I did not and I don't know, I don't know why we're kicking it back to them. I don't know why we're not addressing the issue ourselves and you know. I would hate to see the Board of Selectmen decide, oh, well, we're in favor of Board of Food Trucks. And then it comes back to us and we decide, well, we're not. I mean, it seems to me our charge as a zoning board is to decide whether we're in favor of this or not. But like I said, I missed the last meeting.
But Mark, you may have missed the last meeting, but I was there and I don't remember that we all agreed. On this use in 6100. Because I agree with Mark, I do not agree that a food truck in somebody's driveway. Isn't it? Business and accessory used to the house. I do not agree with that paragraph. And that's why I brought it up, that the world now thinks that we do. And by saying that we do, I totally agree with everything Mark just said. We either believe in food trucks or we don't.
So if I could. This discussion has had some. Over the last three or four years, we've had numerous discussions about food trucks.
And we always say no.
And we have always said no. We've always said that we don't feel as a commission. That we can allow it because we can't regulate it. So if there's going to be food trucks. It needs to go to the first selectman and they can. If they're going to give a temporary. Peddler's permit, whatever they're going to call it, then. Then that's on the first selectman, but. We have had this discussion so many times and we don't feel like. It's always been the same. We don't feel like we can regulate it. And this letter. It is, we've already done this, we've given it to the first selectman, for whatever reason. They decide to send it back to us. So we're doing it again. We're having the same discussion again. We're giving it back to them. It is not something that we felt like we could regulate. And the one thing about the letters, I don't really think it's a home-based business because if it's a food truck, then it's at a home and. I don't know.
Having listened to the Board of Selectmen discuss this so far, and they did even today. We have to give them a firm view. And by bringing in this 6100, that it's a home-based business, just. Muddles up the water. They want to know and they've said it. They want to know, do we believe there should be food trucks in Kent or not?
The reason we asked for the letter is so we could review the language. And I don't think the language here faithfully represents what we wanted to, what I heard in the meeting. However. We did say that we felt we could regulate it because a permanent food truck. All right, in place would essentially be regulated as a restaurant. And that's how we would allow or disallow a permanent food truck facility. Now, if somebody wanted to park a food truck. At their home and then drive it elsewhere. To serve food, that's where it fell under a home-based business. So those, I believe that was what we came out of with last week because if somebody wants to own a food truck and park it. At their house and that's where they fill it and they drive it somewhere else to serve food, that's great. If it's a permanent food truck facility where they're serving food out of it, it essentially becomes a restaurant and we manage it as a restaurant where it's allowed or disallowed. And then if they want temporary permits. To, for someone to park a food truck on public property. They would have to go to the Board of Selectmen. And I think with our last point, which all these are not really touched on in the memo, but the point about can a private individual. In the privately bring a food truck onto a property for an event of the day, we didn't feel that that was something that we regulated because it's not a permanent. And not a permanent thing. We have no basis in our regulations to say a wedding can't bring in a food truck for a private event.
So I would tag on to what. David said that this, we asked Donna to craft this letter, so we could respond back to the Board of Selectmen. This is a draft letter, so if, again, if. If the process, if somebody looked at this letter and thought that this was not a draft, then I think that they should. Maybe pay more attention.
Yes.
Actually, it should say draft across it and it does not.
Okay, okay. Secondly, I don't agree with Mark and Alice in your interpretation of 6100. 6100.2, which talks about those, the buildings and so forth that Mark mentioned. Is for. Home offices and minor home occupations. The discussion that we had at our last meeting was for a major home occupation which does not have those constraints to it, so if you have to look at 6103. So it was just a way for us to determine, Mark, the conversation was. Trying to figure out where within our regulations this use could be permitted. And this was the one location where we thought that it could be permitted. Because it's not permitted. Anywhere else. So the determination that we tentatively. Arrived at at our last meeting was that the regulations seem to be. Adequate. To convey the use that the commission. In accordance with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Feels about food trucks, feels about this particular use. So the idea is to craft a letter to send back to the selectmen to say that we believe the regulations are adequate to capture. This use.
Matt, are you saying they just park the truck in there on their property, but they are not. Selling from the truck when it's on their property?
That was, that was one of the issues that we spoke about at the last meeting, but it wasn't necessarily the only one.
The letter needs to have a few more paragraphs describing kind of the three or four food truck related things. How we regulate those three or four uses and which ones would be permitted or not permitted when they're various permitting. And I think. The thing that everyone is up and up is very concerned about is actually a truck parked somewhere serving food. And we should specifically call out the permanent or non-permanent and how those are handled in the regulation and where, whether that's a planning and zoning thing or a. A Board of Selectmen thing.
Why do we have to. Make everybody in the whole world happy? Why can't we just say. We don't allow food trucks in Kent?
I couldn't agree more.
I couldn't agree more.
I fully, I fully understand that this was a draft letter. I, again, Matt looked at 6100. It says for a home-based business, it is to be. Conducted entirely within a building, which is ludicrously not. The definition of a home-based building is use of a portion of a dwelling, which certainly is not. I don't understand why we are struggling. To shoehorn this into the definition of a home-based building business, which it doesn't qualify for. And I don't understand why we aren't just taking this on, why we're kicking it back to the Board of Selectmen. Why as a Board of Zoning, we aren't just addressing this and deciding. Permit it or not, however the vote comes, it comes.
Mark, I partly disagree. I'm not in favor of the food trucks serving food. In our town.
Okay, stop right there.
Excuse me, Mark. Excuse me. Something that you said I feel is incorrect. That you stated about home-based businesses. Okay, if you're in the trades and you're a plumber and you keep. All of your, you run your business out of your garage. Or out of your house and you have a garage where you keep all of your inventory. That you move into your truck and you go to somebody's house to fix it. That is still a home-based business. And if you have a food truck. And you cook your food. Or you prepare it in part of your house. And you have that food truck parked in your driveway and you go to New Milford or wherever else other than Kent. To serve food, that is also a home-based business that is allowed by our regulations in the town of Kent. What our regulations don't allow. Right now is. Is food trucks. Serving food in the town of Kent. And that is the way the regulations read right now. And I think we can just state that in the letter. Our regulations allow for a home-based business. But they don't allow for a food truck to serve food in our town. Mark, can I ask you to clarify the section of the regulation where you're, 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 have concluded that it's entirely within a building?
It's, that's, I believe in 6100 itself. That is, the business must be conducted entirely within a building. And then my other point was in the definition of home-based business. Which says it is a use of a portion of a dwelling.
Mark, it specifically allows for that to be adjusted by a special permit.
Yes, it does.
So that's why you can have it outside of the dwelling.
I understand, but that's as if to say. Anything can be a home-based business if the commission says we say so.
Okay, I just have to drill down here because I don't see that, I don't see that text in 6100.
I'll try and pull it up.
Okay, as, I mean, Mark, as it relates to a major home occupation, I don't see it anywhere, but I don't see it. I just don't see it, I'm sorry.
Is the board? Is the board, uh, the, uh, the committee members, commission members feel that a private individual, say a wedding or another event brings a food truck onto private property that the town of Kent, uh, in our regulations, we would be disallowing that.
No. No, if you have a private party, it's there for the party and it leaves.
Right. So what, what are, what are we stopping?
That's not what we're talking about.
I, I think that's where this got murky. Okay. I, I, I agree with everything that David said earlier about recalling the last meeting and our discussion. But I think we also talked about if someone has a wedding or a special party, that they should be permitted to have a food truck come for that special event. And I think there has to be a way for us to allow that and also disallow food trucks in our town center or in other, in other areas. In other words, it should be restricted to just basically a kind of personal use. I think Adam, I think Adam also makes a pretty good point, although that's murky too, about, um, you know, home-based businesses. He's right. That's what plumbers, electricians, many contractors do. So I, I don't think we want to be policing all that. But back to the, the food truck thing, I think we should not allow them except for personal uses for private parties.
Right. We don't have to actually disallow because everybody knows anything. Okay, if we don't allow it in our regulations, it is not allowed. We don't have to specify that we
That's the beauty of paragraph, paragraph one and two say that. That's all we need to say.
Referring to, what I'm referring to is, I'm sorry, I should have said it is how we respond to the, to the Board of Selectmen on it with a letter.
And I believe that we should take out the third paragraph and just give the, give them the first two. Which basically
And Matt, uh, if you look at section sixty-one hundred, subsection two, subsection A.
Hey.
It says a home-based business, except as permitted by the commission, you're granted a special permit. Any home office or minor home occupation shall be carried on entirely within a building.
And that's, that's, thank you, Mark. Thanks for finding that. Um, that's been a part of my point is that, is that a food truck could never be considered um, a home-based business or a minor home occupation. So the only way it would fall in with the definition would be a major um, home occupation, which would require uh, a site plan approval. So a special permit site plan approval. Um, and that's, so, so, you know, I, I, I know it's, I, I know it's somewhat tenuous, but that's all we could, that's, that's the only place that we thought last meeting that it could possibly work. And right now, of course, it's, I'm sorry, just one, one more thing. And Adam is, Adam is right. We, we could simply say that our regulations are adequate now that the, that the, the food trucks are not allowed by our zoning regulations. I, I, I think it's, it's, it's as simple as that. And the first selectman could say, well, we want to allow food trucks and we have made our point clear that they're not allowed by the regulations.
Well, I
First selectman can then do what they are planning to do, which is to hire someone to, to compose an ordinance. And they've got their copies on hand for, uh, Sharon and, uh, New Canaan or some other place, North Canaan. And they are enormously technical and specific and how those towns actually control it is mind-boggling. But that's up to the Board of Selectmen, but that I know because I listen to them. They want to know how planning and zoning feels about food trucks. And then we don't need to put the third paragraph in. All we need to do is say the first two.
But Alice, I think
Strongly that we don't want them. That's why we don't have a regulation, period.
Uh, the, the purpose of the letter, as I recall, was to have several paragraphs explaining our rationale to prevent us from going back and forth for another three or four years. Like we don't regulate food trucks because we don't generally regulate temporary businesses. If people wanted to run a food truck as a, you know, to go that would fall, if someone had a permanent food truck, we would, we would manage it as a restaurant. If you want to do something out of those areas, then write an ordinance for it.
And if you read, if you read an ordinance, it flies completely in the face of our saying, we don't believe there should be food trucks in Kent.
Right.
Because there will be food trucks in Kent.
But we're not really, you know, it's not our place to say that we don't believe this should or shouldn't be.
Yes, it is.
We're a body that makes regulations. Our regulations allow something or they don't allow something or they don't mention it and therefore it's not allowed.
Well, that's what we, that's why we don't
Right now, our regulations do not allow food trucks. And David was right. Part of what we were supposed to do was at least in some, even in a minor way, tell the, the first selectmen why we don't allow food trucks because they're going to kick it back to us because they're politicians.
Okay, but Adam, that letter doesn't say, doesn't say we don't allow food trucks. It says our regulations enable us to regulate food trucks as home-based businesses. If I, if that letter were to say we don't allow food trucks because we don't want food trucks to what you want, that'd be fine with me.
I'm not, I'm not defending the letter.
The third paragraph of the letter is not, is not
I think we
encapsulating the conversation, which is, we need to adjust it.
We can take the third paragraph out. I, I'm not, I'm not defending that. I'm just saying what we're supposed to be writing to them is we don't allow food trucks by our regulations. The reason why we're not allowing them is this.
They, they are looking for some, they're looking for some guidance.
They're looking for an out.
Well, that's guidance.
Well, the out is we don't allow food trucks right now.
And why we don't allow them.
And that's why I think we're making, you're making a big mistake to go into this sixty-one hundred excuse for if somebody parks a food truck so they can drive it down to New Milford on Monday. That's just, that's not the point.
Correct. So if I could hop in here, if, if we eliminate the final paragraph, we still haven't disqualified anyone under sixty-one hundred by, by doing a home-based food truck of which they could drive to a personal residence in Kent or New Milford or wherever. Is, is that correct?
That's correct, I think.
Right. So, so there's nothing we have said that disqualifies anybody that right of having a home base.
Well, they're, that we, we, they're not selling food from the truck in their backyard. They're parking their truck. They're going to take it somewhere else to sell the food.
They're not allowed to sell it at their homes.
No, that's what I mean. They're not allowed. So it's, in that sense, it's not a home-based business.
But, but they are allowed to drive it to the personal residence and self and right. Or somebody
Oh, they can drive it to somebody's wedding.
I think so.
Wedding and you wanted to have a food truck.
I think so.
For a private party, yes.
I, I mean, somebody's paying for it, either the guests or the, the host or somebody's paying for it. So, so, so we're not disqualifying that. We're not, we're not prohibiting uh, anyone's right to, uh, have a food truck as a home-based business regulated as a restaurant. But what we are saying is that we're not in favor of food trucks in Kent.
Okay. Well, the second paragraph of the letter does not say that.
I, I, I think, I think we're on it. I, I, I think we're on really sort of tenuous ground here. We're talking about enforcing the regulations, which is one of our charges, right? So we've got this, we've got this set of zoning regulations that this commission is bound to uphold. Right? We've got this other hat, which Wes talked about, um, a couple of months ago, which is this planning hat. And the planning hat, we don't, we, we don't plan as a commission. We plan as the, the, the tip of the spear of a community. Um, and we have heard from some vocal members of the community about what they think about food trucks. And we've heard about some other vocal members of the community about there's some opposite thing. But we're, we're talking about a planning function now. Um, that's different than a regulation function and we can't just say this commission, we don't want them. That's, that's, that's just not fair to the community.
I don't agree. I don't agree to that in the least.
I don't think
All kinds of decisions about what we believe is appropriate or not appropriate for the community.
Not without a public hearing, Mark. We either follow the regulations.
If we're prepared to say our regulations don't address food trucks and accordingly they're prohibited under our regulations. Fine. But let's just say that. That's what, that's the conclusion.
I, I do agree with that. I, we have to, our regulations don't allow for food trucks. They are not allowed. And
I agree.
Nobody wants to propose a change that they can do that and then we can have a public hearing about.
Correct.
Right now, they are not allowed under our regulations.
Right.
From, from that, that makes me feel really comfortable from a, from, from a, a, a charge perspective. My belief, my understanding of our charge, that response to the Board of Selectmen fits squarely in our
What we should do. Where, that's what we're saying.
Why?
So, Donna.
You were also saying we were supposed to do, we were going to do some other things too, but that's fine. If we, if we limit it to that, that's great. Sorry, Adam.
Can you draft a letter that that says right in our regulations, unless you disagree with what we're saying.
It says it in section and paragraph two. Section fourteen, ten point one states that any use not specified in the regulations as permitted shall be deemed prohibited. Section ten, fourteen, ten point two states that where the permissibility of a produce is uncertain, the commissioner, the ZO can make a determination. As you recall, the commission and the zoning enforcement officer made that determination when they referred the regulation of food trucks to you. It says it there, so I'll just take out the last paragraph. Excuse me for not putting draft on the letter. I will do that in the future. And then I will send this to the Board of Selectmen if it's okay with you guys. I just need a motion.
I think that's exactly right. I, I don't think we
That's what I said.
I'll make that motion what Donna said she's gonna and send it.
Yeah.
Ready to now, Anne.
So the motion is made.
I'll second the motion. Okay.
Any further
Would you read the motion again?
I'm making the motion that that we, that Donna sends the letter with the removal of the third paragraph.
That's clean.
That's clean. It states what our regulations are. It states that because we don't specifically allowed, it is not allowed.
Well, can you just clarify for me then? The third sentence of that second paragraph says, as you recall, the commission and the CEO made that, that determination when they referred the regulation of food trucks to you. What determination was that that we're referring to?
That they're not allowed.
Did we say that?
Yes, you did. That happened August of two years ago and we had a discussion and referred it to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Mark, that's why I'm saying this has been an ongoing an ongoing conversation.
For two years.
We've done this. We've already kicked it back to the selectmen. They couldn't figure out what to do with it, so they passed the buck again.
Okay. Well, then I think the third sentence of that second paragraph can be changed to accordingly, as we have previously determined, food trucks are not permitted in Kent.
Perfect.
I think we voted already. Oh, no, we didn't vote. Sorry.
We didn't vote.
If I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted. I'm fine. Okay.
So Donna
I would, I would honestly, I would rather it say that our regulations don't allow food trucks in Kent.
Fine with that.
Is that, is that okay? Can you add that?
What if we just left that last sentence out? Just left the last sentence out.
Fine with it. As Adam suggests, accordingly, as we previously determined, our regulations do not permit food trucks in Kent. That's fine.
As we have previously determined, our regulations. Say again?
Do not permit food trucks in Kent.
In the town of Kent or just Kent?
Town, whatever you like.
This is your letter. I'm just
Town of Kent.
Thank you.
Is, is, is that public property?
Yeah, that's, that's
That implies public.
That's all
Doesn't really imply anything it should say.
I don't think we have to imply anything. I think we should just leave it like that and not get more specific. The more specific we get, we start to dig a hole.
Right, exactly.
And we have to start defining all sorts of stuff. They're not allowed in Kent by our regulations.
So, so what happens if I, what, what happens if I decide I want to have a party and I want a pizza food truck at my, in my driveway?
If you are not selling it, you're, it's not a commercial establishment in a residential zone.
You can do it.
That's the difference.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I looked at. Once you bring it on your property and you start selling it to the general public, it's a different permit. It's drawing to an area of health. Um, and a different process to the Department of Health. And it becomes a commercial establishment because you are getting money. If you're, if you're just giving it to your friends and families, then it's just a private party.
Well, somebody's buying it. So is, is that the host that's buying it?
The host that's buying it. And then that, that determines whether or not torrential area health gets involved. But that's the host problem. It's not the towns. It's not ours.
That's what we're saying.
I agree. Read it aloud.
You, you need, you need to accept the, the modification to the motion.
So I, I'm I'm making the modification to our motion. We need a second to that.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion carried. Uh, Matt, is your hand up?
Um, no, Wes, you've got a full commission. So, uh,
Okay.
It's just, uh, it's just the, the, the commissioners.
Perfect. But I, I did elevate you, but that's fine.
You call for nays?
David?
Yes, I am a nay on that. I just wanted to, thank you.
Thank you. I, I couldn't see your face up there. Yeah.
David?
Yes, Mark.
Can I just ask you, are you a disc golfer?
No, I am not, but I was an ultimate frisbee player.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, sorry to bother.
So Donna, you'll draft that and send that then? You, you'll, you'll write it as a letter and send it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
I ask a question due in the first par
You're mute.
You're on mute, Anne.
Just cut out.
The first paragraph, should the word be discussed or voted on?
No, you didn't vote on January.
You're right. You're right. You're right.
All right, let's, let's move on. Five B three. Modifications to High Watch. And Adam, if you could take over here, I appreciate that.
Or Darrell, are you?
Yes, yes, I am. Thanks for asking.
So then I'm going to elevate Matt and Anne. I'm sorry, I'm getting there. It's just
Take your time.
So, um, so this is about the modification to, to High Watch. To make a, uh, a daycare, convert one of the buildings that they have to a daycare. Jason, I think we wanted some more information from you. So why don't we start with the So why don't we start with the application?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Jason Perillo. I am the Vice President of Communications at High Watch Recovery Center. Um, as you recall, um, last month I laid out our plan to, um, open a daycare on our property. Specifically and exclusively for use by our employees, uh, for the care of their children. It would not be open to the public. Um, and you know, for our employees who are compensated at a lower rate, our plan would be to provide a subsidy, charge them a lower fee. Uh, we just, we want to just make it accessible for folks who work for us. But as the commissioner remembers, you had some questions. Um, about essentially to try and drill down, correct me if I'm wrong, to drill down on the exact scope. Of what changes might need to be made. Um, and, and to that end, uh, we spoke with the Torrington area health district. Um, we met on site with the fire marshal and the town's building official. Uh, and I think, you know, from those communications, I might be able to give you a little bit of a sense. Of what we may need to do. Um, so just. To summarize, um, there is fifteen hundred and fifty square feet of usable space. In the building that we're talking about. Um, on the first foot floor, which is where this, um, daycare would be. Uh, this is a total of one thousand fifty-two square feet. Um, and within that one thousand fifty-two, um, as the Office of Early Childhood identifies that there's five hundred and seventy-six square feet. Of program, what they consider to be program area space. Uh, we only need four hundred and twenty square feet. Um, per the O E C guidance. So we have ample space on site. Um, there is no need to expand the footprint in any way, shape or form. When we met with the building official. Um, and the fire marshal, you know, there's obvious changes that need to be made internally in terms of, um, mostly, um. Handicapped access and compliance with ADA. Uh, the only thing externally in relation to that would obviously be the installation of a ramp. Uh, there's not currently a ramp at the facility or at the building and we would actually obviously have to add one, which wouldn't be terribly difficult at all. Um, we have. Uh, again, we have communication from the Torrington area health district. There's, um, some back and forth as to whether or not there would need to be changes to the septic. Um, our engineer calculates, um, the two hundred gallons per day, uh, would be needed and, and the current septic is rated for six hundred. Uh, that would be ample. Um, but there is question back and forth between, um, the health district. As to whether or not we would need to, uh, change the septic and make it a little bit more robust. If that ends up being the case, we don't have final determination on that. If that ends up being the case, we can do it. Um, it's not a big project. Um, and you know, our, um, our engineers have actually laid out a way we could do that with relative ease. In addition, uh, and I think I referenced this at the last meeting. Uh, we do need to add fenced in exterior, uh, play space, uh, for the children. Um, and we have identified a thirty foot by forty foot, twelve hundred, uh, square feet, a site that would be fenced in. Uh, directly, um, adjacent to the house at, um, at Carter Road that we're talking about using. So, and, and again, I think it was actually, um, Commissioner Manus who had some questions as to the scope. Um, and remember, and you know, stating specifically, you know, the commission wasn't necessarily concerned about what would we need to be done inside? The structure, but wanted to get a better picture on exactly how much work would need to be done. Um, and our conclusion is that, uh, the work to be done, uh, would be minimal. Um, exclusively within the, within the structure, the only exceptions, of course, being the ramp that I discussed. Um, the installation of the fence, uh, to, you know, keep the kids safe when they play outdoors. And perhaps, um, a new septic system, that, that's what we're looking at right now. I don't know if that answers everybody's questions. You certainly ask away.
So, um, so my, I'll, I'll, I'll start just by, you know, what my. Big concerns are for, well, first of all, I think it's great that you guys want to offer daycare to, to your employees. And that's a really nice thing. My, my concerns are. Our further expansion and the intensification of the use. There, um, everything's gotten much bigger and it, it affects everybody. I don't, I'm not saying that this does. But those are my concerns and, um, and, and I do wonder. And I, if, if this takes away from business of the daycare center, the two daycare centers, I think that's just two in town. Um, and, um, I don't know if they're, if they're full, if they're looking for kids, if they could even handle twelve more children. I, I, but that's, so those are my two. Those are my two concerns and I, um. I would like to see, uh. Just a rough sketch and ideas of what. Of, of the, of the playground, because to me that, you know, adding on the playground to the outside fencing something in, bringing in. Placelands sides is, is essentially a, a further intensification because it makes everything look bigger. And it's all very big.
Um, all fair concerns. Um, you, you, Commissioner, have always been very consistent. Your concerns about intensification. I, I completely respect that. I also appreciate your mentioning that, you know, this isn't necessarily that. Uh, there is a little bit of difference and I, I, I appreciate that. And I'm not trying, not trying to put words in your mouth. I'm just trying to, trying to share my, what I'm thinking here. Um, we did take a survey of our employees who at present would utilize the service. Um, none of them currently utilize daycare within the town of Kent. Um, they either, you know, they, they juggle things with family or, you know, with the, the spouse works a different shift. And of course, you know, that brings its own challenges. Um, you know, typically what folks have done, if they live in another town, our employees, you know, they'll do daycare locally and then maybe, you know. You know, grandma can, can pick up at daycare. The, the, you know, for, for, for parents in, in, in the meeting, you, you, you all know what I'm talking about. It, you know, we, we, my wife and I juggle it with, with our daughter too. Um, so it, you know, to, to your question about that, there, there, I can't speak to what would happen in, you know, two years, three years. If someone might have opted, an employee might have opted to utilize local dick. I, I don't have crystal ball, but at present, you know, that's, that's the current state. Um, in terms of, you know, seeing, uh, I, I have actually a site plan that I can share if, if. If I be able to share my screen, I can certainly show it. It's a very simple site plan. It's, it's got a rectangle on it.
Everybody an idea of, of the size compared to the building of what you're going to do.
Absolutely.
Size of the outdoor space and the view, where it's viewed from would be good.
Sure. So if I'm able to share my screen, I will, I will do that. Am I able to do that, Donna?
Yes.
Thank you. So. Let me. So as you can see to the upper right. Is Carter Road. Um, and, and just to give you a sense, you know, for those who, who don't know. Heading. To the left would be Route seven and headed to the right would be, um. Um, Brick School Road. Um, so you can see that where Carter Road is, the existing structure. Is where my cursor is right now. And the proposed thirty by forty playground, which again would, would need to be fenced in to be consistent. Um, you know, with, with the regulations is located, um, where my cursor is right here and that is, that is to scale. Like I said, it's a, it's a rectangle on a, on a drawing.
That's about two hundred feet down the slope then roughly?
Um. Let me see if I can figure that out for you. It's where thirty. It's actually more than that.
Is there any screening existing now between the road and that building, trees or, I don't know what that is under that, uh, geothermal system?
Yeah, um, this area over here is wooded, um, and it is, as you can see. There, there's a pretty substantial elevation change. From the road down to the structure. Um, so there is, there are, there. Is a wooded area here. I'll be quite honest, if you were, you know, where the words Carter Road is. And you were at the edge of the road looking down, you would probably be able to see. This area. You would. And again, that, that driveway is existing too.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I would just say, um, as a parent and grandparent and employer. I am well aware that employees would vastly prefer an onsite, um. Childcare facility to something offsite. And I don't believe this is an expansion of the use of the property at all. Um, it's not a more intensification use of the property at all. And I would be in favor of approving this application subject to their fencing in the area, which I think is a very good and safe idea.
I have a couple of questions, Jason. Um, if you said there's an upstairs in this building?
There is, um, and the. The daycare area would actually be limited just to the first floor.
And what's the second floor used for?
Um, and now at this point it's storage. And would continue to be.
Okay, so there, you don't need a second form of megress or anything?
No.
Um. Can? And correct me if I'm using the wrong term, um. Are. People who live in the, do you call them sober homes? I mean, I don't.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Uh, people who live in the sober homes and employees at Wilson's, are they? Employees of High Watch, so to speak?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so they would be using the daycare as well?
Uh, they would be able to. Absolutely. Be open to them. Of course, we're limited. I, I think I might, I may not have mentioned it today, but I meant, I mentioned it last month. Um, you know, we're, we're capped at, at twelve children, so.
Twelve children.
Yeah.
Up to pre, pre age, you said, uh, pre preschool age.
Yeah, the Office of Early Childhood regulations permit us to have older children, but, you know, obviously the goal is to serve. The needs of, of younger kids. I think that the question may have been asked about an after school program and in this particular location and, and circumstances. An after school program wouldn't really be practical. So the, the, the expectation and intention is to, you know, younger kids, you know, before they would be going to school.
Okay, I think I read it somewhere in the notes that it said. Uh, preschool and. I think that was, that was the only thing. What, what are you going to do if a child gets sick? You call the parents, same as any other preschool.
Same as any other preschool. Actually, the nice thing is, at, at our main campus, we have nurses and doctors on staff. So if there were anything supremely urgent, we would obviously. You know, you want to bring kids the help they need, but obviously we would function like any other. Any other daycare would.
So I. So, so the children would not, it would not be protocol for them to.
No, all of this would be self-contained right at that location that I've, that I'm sharing right now.
Jason?
Yes.
This is Alice. Um, I have a question and it's probably, I shouldn't, probably out of place. But how does a nonprofit organization? Uh, such as you all are, uh, handle the financial accounting standards for something like this? Is it a cost of business? Is it part of employment? Uh?
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean.
Terms of, I mean, the price.
I can give you an accounting answer.
Yeah, accounting answer. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. No, yeah, on, on, you know, any of the expenditures would be considered a, a cost of doing business. Um, like, like any other, you know, we're providing a service to our employees, you know, you know, our, you know. What we pay into an employee's 401K is a cost of doing business, just as, you know, just as, this is a benefit would be, you know, similar in nature. And of course, um, any revenue it brings in, um, from payments from employees would be considered another revenue line on the, uh. In the financial statements. It wouldn't be segregated into another corporation or company or LLC or anything like that. I didn't expect that question.
That's, that's what you do on a, from an accounting standpoint with Wilson's as well?
Yes, same thing.
So I also agree that, uh, that, that childcare is, is a tremendously important part of, um. Any community. Um, I think that, um. And, and Mark, I'm sorry, like we see, we seem to be at odds here, um, tonight, but I, I have to go back to the regulations to inform my decision. I, I, I find the regulations, um. Uh, extremely helpful in, in crafting my thoughts on, um. On these applications and, and I conclude that, um, broadly. Um, this is a pre-existing non-conforming, um, but as the, as, uh, Mr. Perillo's letter, um, says, Jason's letter says, um, they're, 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 they're fully. Allowed to operate the way they're allowing per their special permit. So they're not doing anything, um. Incorrect now, but any change to the use, um, the, we first have to determine. And I think Mark has made his own determination that the, that, that, the, the, the additional use shall not increase the non-conformity. So for me, in order to, in order to determine whether it does increase the non-conformity, I have to look at the regulations with regard to, um. Daycare. And the daycare that, that High Watch is proposing at that site is not permitted anywhere else in the rural zone as a, as a, a permitted use or as an accessory use. The only place that we could shoehorn it in, um, is where it's, where this use is, um. Customarily incidental to. Um, and that's, that I think is the question. I don't believe that this use is customarily incidental to, um, High Watch's, um. Core mission.
And Matt?
Is?
Yeah. You're, I mean, in thirty-two hundred, you are allowed a daycare center, special permit. Is your.
You're not though. Because you're allowed, you're allowed a daycare, you're allowed a daycare center, but what they're, what they're really asking for is, 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 um. You're allowed a daycare center. Let me get there, David. Thirty-two thirty.
It's on page forty-six and thirty-two hundred, because I checked that same thing.
Yeah, so a daycare center, right? And, and a daycare center provided that such use shall be accessory to a public or semi-public use. And this is certainly not a public or semi-public use. Um, a group daycare home, um, has to be by resident occupants. Um, and if, if you go back to the definition of your daycare, your daycare definitions. They're, they're asking for, and it may, it might be just revising the, the application, but they're talking up to twelve. And you're not really allowed up to twelve, um, unless you are. Um, unless you're operating in a private family home. So you can be up to six people in a facility other than a private family home for a group daycare home. Um, and seven to twelve in a family home. Um, so, and a daycare center, um, is, is for more than twelve related or unrelated people. So it, 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 it just doesn't fit. Um, and again, I, I, I know that, I know that I'm a stickler for the regulations, but that's the only way I know how to do my job. Um, so I conclude that, um. That unless it's customarily incidental to the use of High Watch. It's, it's not, it's not permitted anywhere else. So it seems to me that it's a, an expansion of the non-conformity.
Well, uh, I think, uh, the, the use of a affiliated daycare center. Has become customary to. has become customary to institutional operators like if the Kent School was to put one in, if the South Kent School went in.
They have one, the Kent School has a daycare center.
It's open to the public.
And I think.
It is open to the public.
It's open to the public.
Whether or not it's open to the public, I think it has become a customary accessory use for institutions like this. So I guess I disagree with Matt, and I think it should be permitted.
I think I would also have to put my support in that. Matt, I think your reading of that definition might be overly restrictive. I certainly do consider it accessory to just having employees. The, we do have that term group daycare home. But I mean, if you're day, if you have a daycare center with 20 people, and when they only three, only three kids are there, does that mean you're in violation? It seems like maybe we're overly strict reading. I don't feel it's intensification or not incidental to the existing uses.
But it does fall under the definition of daycare center. An establishment other than a family daycare home or a group daycare home that offers or provides daycare to more than 12 related or unrelated people.
More than 12.
What section are you looking at? On this twenty-two hundred definition.
Twenty-two hundred, page twelve.
Thank you.
Under definitions. No. I mean, it says for more than 12, I'm not sure how we got that definition.
I think it's based on what state, how the state regulates them. The state regulates them based on the number of children that are going to be there. So up to 12 actually is called a group childcare home according to the state licensing organization to the state of Connecticut. And then once you go above 12, and it becomes something different, and the criteria for your license changes drastically at that point in time.
So in our definition of group daycare home, the second part that says for seven to 12 related or unrelated people, including the provider's own children or relatives in a private family home.
Right.
Now, does do you know where, did we make that definition? Is that a state definition that it, that it makes it have to be in a private family home?
Look at the bullet before it.
For not more than six, including the provider's owner-related, when operated in a facility other than a family home. So you can have, you can have a space made for daycare and only put six, but if you want to have seven or 12, you have to do it in a family home. I'm just, I'm not, I'm, I don't understand the definition. It doesn't work for me in my head. I feel like there's something wrong. And that's my question. I'm not sure where the definitions, if these definitions are the ones that the state has made, and they're saying this, I just, I wonder now how we made our definition, and if, and if what we should be doing is considering adjusting our definition.
Looks like our definition no longer matches what the state has, because the state has very, very similar language, but they don't have the private home requirement in it.
I think that was something that we added to the definition.
Also, my problem is this, I agree with Matt in that we have to make our decision based on our regulations. I I feel like this is a use that we should allow High Watch to be able to do. They're not expanding, building a new building or anything like that. Luckily, my children are older, but all of my kids went to daycare. And when my wife worked for the Green Chimney School, they went to daycare right there. It was a convenience that was amazing in what's already a very busy life for everybody. So I can't, I can't, I couldn't accept it right now because our regulations don't allow for it, but maybe what we need to do is look at adjusting that definition. And then it will allow for it.
Okay, so I'll say this, and then I'll be quiet. If, if we are not going to follow our regulations, then our regulations don't mean anything. The only way, the only way that I'm going to be comfortable discussing any, any, any application going forward is if we follow Mark's recommendation and say that it fits within customarily incidental, but if we make any other kind of decision about how we're going to look at the regulations, it doesn't, it doesn't work for me. I can't, I personally cannot regulate as a commissioner if we don't follow the regulations.
Even if we do customary and incidental, it doesn't, it doesn't follow our definition. It doesn't fit into the definition.
Mark will have to make that pitch, Adam, that it is, and I think he's attempted to, he's make the pitch that it is customarily incidental.
No, I'm just saying, but we still have to adjust the definition.
I don't, I, listen, we spent a lot of time on those regulations when we rewrote them. I mean, you were there, I was there, almost all of us were there. And I can't, I can't think that, that the nine of us put something in there that we didn't want in there or didn't understand.
Well, when you read the definition, doesn't it seem a little not right to you that, that you can have, you can have six children in in a facility other than a family home? But but to have seven or 12 people, kids under your charge, it has to be in a private family home.
Well, Adam, I guess I didn't understand, if it was customary and incidental to the primary use, it doesn't need to fit within the daycare-related definition?
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, that's my understanding. It just, if it's customary and incidental, it's customary and incidental, doesn't need to fit within another definition. But I, but I bow to Matt's superior interpretation of the regs.
It's just rigid. It may not be, it's probably not superior, Mark, but it's certainly rigid.
Mark, where is that in the regs that you're referring back to?
Page forty-four, David, thirty-two, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-one, twelve. As an accessory use permitted by right, which is, I thought we had, I thought, we discussed this at our last meeting, and I thought we had, I thought we had decided that it wasn't permitted by right. Otherwise, Donna would have been able to issue a a
A zoning permit.
Zoning permit, thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. And I've got, I have, I have some, I don't want to call them issues, but I have some concerns of my own. One is, I think what we need to do is they need to formally submit a site plan for the change. I need a site plan. This would be fine, but speaking with the Kent Volunteer Fire Department Fire Chief, he would like to see a site plan, is he wants to make sure that he's going to be able to get his trucks in there. We need parking information for employees. We need drop-off locations for these kids. I did talk to Stan and I talked to Joe. They were told that these children will be there and their ages will be up to 10, which is not what's been presented to us by Jason. He said preschool age. I need that clarified. I have been talking to Kathy. There is a possibility that they will have to put in a new septic, and I understand that's not an issue. The other issue comes with the fact that they are considered a public water supply because fifty-four has been combined with sixty-two, so that changes their whole water permit through the State Department of Health. So now Antonella Daha is involved. I, I think we need to be more specific in the modification, and we should say that is a change of use from an art therapy, which is what that building had been designated when they came to us originally, and actually formally change it to a group childcare home, if that's the one that you want to use. I'm a little bit confused about whether or not this is, if they're going to be providing something for their employees, but yet they're charging them to use this. To me, it becomes more of a commercial thing, even though, even though the people that are going to be attending there are the children of employees. And I know you have to pay the staff, and I get all of that, but I would like to see what the employee count is going to be. That's based on the age of the children that are going to be there, so that will fluctuate. There's still, for me, a lot of missing questions and information, and I think it's a little bit more entailed than we were originally, that I originally thought. So those are, those are my issues, and that's why I prepared both the resolution of approval, highlighted changes, and the resolution of denial until we can get down and drill to the bottom of what needs to be done here.
I think those, that's a lot of, those are a lot of concerns that I was not aware of, honestly. So I don't know what everybody else thinks, but if that's the case, this is not something that we have to make a decision about this week, is that correct? At this meeting, they can go to another meeting?
Adam, could we ask, could we ask Jason to stop screen sharing?
Oh, yeah, Jason, could you give us our screen, or, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
I'm asking, I'm asking Donna, because if we you brought up a lot of things that, that we should give Jason a chance to provide an address as long as we have another month.
So my recommendation is that what they do is they actually withdraw their request for the certificate of zoning compliance or zoning permit for a daycare use and come back to us with a site plan for the modification to change the use from art therapy, which is what that building had been designated to a group childcare home. And then provide, provide us with a site plan showing all of that, showing the traffic flow, showing parking spaces. Confirming the ages, to me, that's very important, because that, like I said, that will drive the number of employees that will be required to be at that facility. Because the number of employees are based on the age of the children that are going to be there. So it's, I would like to see if we could get the whole water thing squared away with Torrenton Area Health and with the state Health Department as far as whether or not they're going to have to put in a new well, run a new line, monitor the water. If they're going to have to put in a new septic, these are all things that they just started to work on. And I think that could modify the site plan. You know, I mean, there's wetlands on that property as well. How close are they to the wetlands? Now, I just think that there's a lot of things that are missing, and I think that if we actually take the letter and put it with the file, have them come to us through the site plan modification process, I would feel a whole lot more comfortable in understanding how this is truly is going to operate.
I, I'm a little concerned, Donna, because you're saying that someone at the fire department said the, which was up to ten, ten years of age. And at the last meeting, I specifically asked if there would be children coming in after school. And the answer was no. Now, if somebody's ten, they're coming in after school, and I don't like the shell game. We're always playing this shell game. And I, I just would like some
Right, and it wasn't to the fire.
Free dancers.
It wasn't to the fire department, it was to the fire marshal and the building official. So, you know, I mean, I think I would like to see something a little bit more substantial and something that correlates conversations that have been held.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna.
I was just.
Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McAndrew, I represented to you last month that there wouldn't be no after-school program. I represented to you fifteen minutes ago that there would be no after-school program. That is my representation to you and to the commission. I cannot speak for what the fire marshal reported to Ms. Hayes secondhand. That is what I've said to you. And with all due respect, I don't appreciate the comment about a shell game.
They are bound by, this is still under special permit, so what stated in a by the applicant in the hearing, they are bound.
Right, well, we were told at the very beginning that the, and I had asked that question as well, because my concern was whether or not children would get dropped off from the school bus, and we were told that the children that were going to be attending there were going to be pre-age school, preschool age.
You stated that last, last month and this month.
Right, right. So, you know.
Donna?
Yeah.
I have a, this is Alice, I have a question. If they, if they re-apply this or resubmit to the, a change of use to childcare, does that then change where it will fit in the regs instead of being thirty-two, thirty-one, twelve? Is it then, is it still an accessory use? And this is a question, I'm having an opinion right now, I'm just trying to figure out if we do change the use, does that change the customarily incidental concept?
That's something that you guys are going to have to make the decision to see whether or not you, you believe that this is an accessory use to the primary use.
Is that something we should try to boot on today?
Do you know, Matt?
Well, I certainly have an opinion, Alice.
Oh, well, well, Megan, asking that, I mean, is it important to actually formally change the use of the building?
If, if we are going to approve this, as I think Mark is suggesting, under that thirty-two, thirty-one, twelve,
Right.
then we do it as an administrative permit, and we don't ask these questions that Donna is
Okay.
asking that we ask. If we do ask these questions, which is a little bit, it's not a little bit, it's contrary to what we decided last month.
Yeah.
If we do decide that we need to ask these questions, then we have to do it not in this administrative permit process, but in the, in the site plan approval process.
But what I think is different now, though, is that there's more, the modifications that they have to make are just on the interior, you know, with the exception of the playground, but what Donna just spelled out to us was there were more, more things going on here, and if we were to approve this right now, Jason's going to have to come back again and again to make a modification to our approving this. And and knowing all this, I don't even know that I can approve it, and I want to. I think it's a, I think it would be better if, if Jason, if you, if you withdraw it and come back next month with a with, with all these other things ironed out, figuring out the water and the septic and, and I mean, there were a bunch of things that Donna. I mean, there were a bunch of things that Donna. Had laid out, and I don't know what everyone else thinks, but that's, um, right now, it doesn't, it's not. There seems to be more going on than, than I initially knew.
Well, I would say, you know, I have no problem. Asking them to answer these additional questions, assuming that, uh, we did the same for. Whether it's Kent School or South Kent School when they put in their daycare center. Uh, which was, which would be a change of use from educational to daycare and, uh. You know, I think these, um, High Watch should be treated the same way as, uh, as those schools.
I, I agree with that. The only difference that I see is that the daycare center for the Kent School. Um, is not located on the Kent School property, uh, it's probably located. It's on Kent School property, but not on the campus. Um, and the other thing is that that's open to the general public, so it, it falls under a completely different. Um, criteria than I think, than, than this does.
If, if they haven't filled up with, with, with children from. Parents.
Right.
So sometimes they can take in some, some kids from the, from the.
That, that, to me, on my mind, that would make it worse. I mean, if, if it's an accessory use. To the existing institution for its own employees, that's to me more clearly an accessory use. Than if they're opening it up to the public.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with, with the, the proposal that's been made. I, I don't, I just want to make sure that we're doing it. And we're doing it the way that we're supposed to be doing it, and not doing it because of a letter that we received from, from Jason that says. We need either a certificate of zoning compliance or a zoning permit. I think, I think there's a little bit more. That's, that's entailed with this, and that's why I just feel more comfortable asking for the site plan process. That's it, and then you guys will just have to decide whether or not you want this to be an accessory use, or if you consider it an accessory use. I think we need the proper vehicle in order to make that decision. I don't think that we have that vehicle at this point in time. So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm fine with that.
And, and that's, that's certainly, uh, Commissioner's fine with me. We were asked for certain items, I was asked for certain items at the last meeting, I provided those to the best of my ability.
You did, absolutely.
So.
I just didn't, we didn't know about these other things, which Donna found out in this last month. So I think, I think it's a. It's new information that, that we have, and I. I, I think what you have is, most people on this commission think that it's a great idea, we just wanted to prove it in the right way.
So I'll, I'll move that we ask for a site plan and the additional information that Donna has outlined.
Is there a second? We have a second, Matt. His hand was faster than yours.
You can have it though, Alice, if you want.
You look, you're, you're looking so satisfied.
Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, so do you want to clarify, are you, are you going to ask Jason to withdraw the original request? And to come back with the site plan application with the information?
I, I think so, I think that's, I, I think that's a.
Mark, are you okay with that?
Way in the end, I think it's a better way for, for High Watch and.
I, I'm okay with that, if that means that we can, if he supplies the required information. Uh, approve this as an accessory use.
I'm not going to answer that.
Yeah, he needs to, he needs to bring us the information.
Have that discussion based on the information that he presents.
But we're, we're not foreclosed from approving it as an accessory use by having him withdraw his application.
Seems like if we're going to be, uh, trying to follow our regulations, that they would submit the site plan. We would go through all the discussion, and we'd say, after all, you know what, you don't need it, Donna can just give you the administrative permit under. Thirty-two hundred twelve, because there's actually no method for us to give a site plan approval. For it.
Well, you're, you're approving the modification.
Uh, true, but I mean, our regulations say you don't need site plan approval for. The use Marcus suggested to manage this, and you need special permit approval for, you know, the, the daycare by our current definition. So we're just in the, we're just weird regulatory limbo. I agree, we all want to see the answers, we need to get them, but at the end of the day, the regulations say that. This use is administrative, so I think we can certainly vote to provide that cover, maybe it doesn't matter at the end of the day.
Donna, if he provided us, if Jason provided us with. If we continue this for another month, provided that we're allowed to, and Jason provided us. With all of this information. Next month that we're looking for, essentially. Essentially. Giving us all of the site plan information. Um, a, and the other items that you, that you asked for. So we'd have all that information that we would have, but that would still enable us to. To approve this under. Uh, under the. The, the incidental, under the thirty-two, thirty-four.
Custom.
Twelve.
Right, so, so basically what you're going to be doing is you're going to be approving the modification to the special permit at the. At that High Watch currently has in place, which is that big, long paragraph. That precedes the, what precedes where it says modification to include. So you're going to modify that special permit. Because the use that's in that building now, it has become part of sixty-two. Which has become part of the therapeutic use, so now you're going to modify the therapeutic use of that building to something else. And, and. Matt's going, I don't think he's agreeing, but, um.
No, I totally agree, I, I, I totally agree, but I'll, I'll take it a step further, and. It's my understanding is that you can't modify a special permit. By doing what we're asking them to do, you have to modify a special permit by having, by modifying the special permit. By having a special permit application, a special permit application in most cases. Requires a public hearing.
You've, you have the option, remember, we had talked about this once before. You have the option of approving a modification to a special permit, either the way the special permit had been granted. Which is through a public hearing, or not. That, we had decided, so, so that, but I still need the site plan portion of it. So that I can show it to the Kent Volunteer Fire Department, and we can see where the, the employee parking is. Look at site lines and do all of that normal stuff that we would normally be doing if someone was going to be doing this.
So if that's the case, then. And this does have to be a modification to the special permit.
Yes.
Then, then, I don't think he should. He should pull his application, he, we should.
That's the whole thing.
Oh.
It's, it was just a letter that was written by Jason. To request a certificate of zoning compliance or a zoning permit for a daycare use.
So what is he. For, to, for us to modify the special permit?
So this is good, but I need it to be a little bit more succinct, and I need a site.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, and so we can continue this on to next month, and we can give Jason the chance to provide this other site plan. The site plan and the other information you wanted, so we can know from the volunteer fire department that, that they're. Good with the, with the access and that, that, um, there's employee parking and this is where it is, and, uh, there was a list. That you, that you would send, and give them an, I have a better idea of what's going to hap- happen with the water situation, and it may not be resolved, but. But I bet they'll have a, a much better idea and, and more clarity on it.
Right.
By then, and then Jason can provide that, and so he doesn't have to submit a new application, and we can. Um, continue this next month.
Right, I just, I need a site plan.
Jason.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, and just to clarify, uh, Donna, you had mentioned that you had just received a letter from me implying that it was not sufficient. And then shortly thereafter said that it was sufficient. Do I need to do anything more than the letter that I've provided?
Um, no, just provide a site plan, that's fine, I'm just going to change. Because your, your request was, um. What I had put was a modification to include. Um, the operation of an optional and partially subsidized A care to be utilized by its employees. I'm taking all of that out and just saying a change of use from art therapy to a group childcare home. So that will, that will happen on my end. But we'll use the letter as the request for the modification.
That is my question, thank you.
So I just need an updated site plan, and I need a site plan to show. You know, entrances and exits from in front of the building. Parking. For the number of employees that you're going to have there, and you're going to have to determine the number of employees based on the ages. So if you're saying preschool age, the number of employees are going to be different than they are if you're saying up to ten.
Correct.
So you're going.
The ratios change depending upon age, you're right.
Right, so, um, so we're going to need to see that, we're going to need to see the handicap accessibility ramp. Um, where that's going to be put, um, I can, you know, you've got on there already the, um. The playground, um, I don't know if the commission is going to ask for any screening of that, because it's not behind. The, um, the main building, it seems to be to the west of it. Um, and whether or not, um, you're, how close are you to wetlands? You know, I'm going to need to know that as well. You know, you might need a wetlands permit, that could possibly be an agent permit based on the closeness to the stream and, and the intensity of the work that you're going to be doing. Um, dumpsters for garbage, we're going to need to see a location for those, any exterior lighting on any of the ramps. Um, you know, we're going to see stuff, we're going to need to see things like that. You know, are you going to have a dedicated pole off for people to drop their children off? Are they going to be parking? Walking them in, how is that going to happen? There's a lot of little things that, you know, I think we're missing out of. Um, that we, that we really should be aware of, and then, um, as I said, I talked to Alan. At the fire department, and he would like to see this and, and be able to understand whether or not they can get their trucks in there.
Yeah, anyway, what you can't see on that site plan that Jason provided is, there, at least there used to be, there was a big semi-circular driveway.
Right.
That came, you know, started on Carter at one end and, and ended up further up, um.
Right.
It's pretty big and wide.
That's still there.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's, yeah, it's still there, part of it goes over the geothermal wells, which might not be a good thing, but, um, they're not my geothermal wells.
Donna, when we draft this, I think we might suggest we don't trip over our own definitions, that we just say something along the lines of. Changing the use from art therapy to daycare. Accessory to, you know, customary and incidental principal use, because if you put group daycare in there, it's going to immediately run afoul of our definition.
That's fine, that was, that, that was the category that the state. Gave them based on the number of children that they are looking to have, so.
Regulations at a future date then.
Probably should, um, you know, so they're in, in line with the state definitions. Um, and then the rest of the stuff would be. Conditions of approval.
Is this a site plan permit or a special permit modification?
It's a modification to a special permit and site plan.
Got it.
Then, um, I think we need a motion to continue this to, uh, next month.
I think we need a motion to withdraw and rescind everything that we had talked about before.
Anything formally in front of us, do we?
Yes, we did, Mark had made one, and then we just went off on a tangent during discussion, so I think if we rescind the original motion. And then start with a new fresh motion, I think that would be better for everybody.
Is that something you can do, Mark?
Uh, I'll rescind my motion, do what you want.
I'll move, we continue this next month.
Second.
Any discussion? Jason, do you have anything?
If, if I have follow-up questions, the commission obviously doesn't mind if I reach out to Donna and just make sure I'm delivering to you what you've requested.
Then, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Everybody's in favor. So moved.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Jason.
Wes, it's all yours.
Thank you, Adam. That was great. Uh, so, uh, moving on to, uh, six B. Uh, six B one, modification to permit seventy-two dash seventy C Kent Green. Continuation of the modifications of signs. Um, is, is somebody here to present that, John?
Yes, yeah, I'm here.
Thanks, Sean.
We, um, we are operating under a. Uh, I always forget the name, alternative signage program and have been for the last fifteen or so years.
Right, right.
Um, and we are requesting a minor modification to, uh, to that program. So, uh, so that we, that would include, uh, the use of vinyl graphics and text. On certain windows, uh, in the shopping center. It's not permitted now in the general regulations of the town. And, uh, we're asking for a modification, uh, given that we're in sort of a parallel program. Uh, that would allow us to use these, uh, vinyl graphics on the windows.
So, so you're not, you're not, um, you're not asking for a, um. Uh, for a variance or anything like that, what you're doing is, when the, when the development was created, there was a, um, a site plan that was also presented. That contained the, um. All of the signage, so what you need to do is you need to modify the signs that were originally approved. So we do allow signage on windows, um. I just need to find it, um.
Yes, yeah. Three square feet.
That's, yeah, so you, you can actually, signs, temp, I touched, painted on a door, signs, temp, oh, that's. They are there, it's, talk and let me see if I can find it.
Okay, well, my understanding was that they are permitted, uh, three square feet, vinyl signs are permitted. But limited to three square feet, and ours would basically cover the, most of the windows, uh, most of two windows. Uh, so that they would be about twenty square feet each. Um, we've provided. I think renderings of, uh, of what it would look like. I mean, I think they're kind of whimsical, I, I think they're attractive. And, um, it's in a part of the green where I would rather not have another pole sign, which we are permitted to use. And, uh, this is, uh, in the building that is directly across from the Union Savings Bank. And, uh, it's, I mean, it's a little bit congested in there, I'd rather have, uh, three-square-foot signature sign. Mounted on the building, which I think we have, um, as of right. Um, and instead of having a, a three-foot by four-foot pole sign. Uh, in that area, we could just put the graphics and identity on the windows. I, I think it will be a, a cleaner presentation of their message. But, but it is twenty square, twenty square feet per, per pane. And, and two window panes.
John, will this follow on, do you think, to other buildings in your, in your center?
I can only think of two where it would be appropriate, one would be Ace Hardware, they have large panes of glass. I can only think of two where it would be appropriate. One would be Ace Hardware. They have large panes of glass and, uh, and, uh, the Davis IGA. But the other, the other ones all have muntens, uh, in the windows and, um, have it, you know, have a different presentation.
Right.
So, so no, I don't think beyond those two, uh, those two additional ones that it would be anything we'd look to do.
They wanna, John, they wanna put this, this artwork that we see on the, on the one window, but they're gonna put it, they wanna put it on both windows that, that are on either side of that door.
Yes, yeah. Exactly.
I'm just, uh, a little confused that the, the letter asks for window decals five feet wide by four feet high. So you're saying those have been reduced in size?
Five by four, yeah, twenty square feet. Twenty square feet.
Not, not three square feet, but five by four, twenty square feet.
Correct. I, I, my understanding is that, that, uh, vinyl decals are permitted up to three square feet. But, uh, but not, not specifically permitted in a larger format.
Okay, so the, I'm sorry, Mark, ahead.
Oh, go ahead. So, so you're requesting that they be permitted in a larger format?
Exactly.
Five feet by four feet.
Yeah.
And essentially though, this would also be in ex, in exchange, they won't have the pole sign.
They won't have a pole sign, no. They, they would have, uh, I think it's called a signature sign. It would be mounted perpendicular to, perpendicularly to the building.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, sometimes they're called blade signs. So this would be, uh, three square feet, which I think we have a picture of here. Yeah.
Yeah, it says store signed by George and Willie. Oh, there it is.
Exactly.
So.
They won't have that big sign that sits on the, on the roof in the gra- in the, in one of the other graphics you sent.
Not unless you insisted on it.
Yeah, no.
This one?
No, that wasn't, that was meant to be in the window. I, there, there is a subsequent picture uh, that I think I sent along, but maybe not, uh, that shows what is on the roof. Lodged on the window, just the way it is on the right-hand side. So it would be exactly the same as the one on the right.
Right.
Not on the roof.
I don't have that one, John.
I, I'm sorry. I, maybe I neglected to send it.
It's fine. So the, um, for a sign consisting of individual letters or symbols attached to or painted on a surface building wall or window, the area shall be considered to be that of the smallest rectangle, triangle, or circle that encompasses all of the letters and symbols. So that's how you get the size. So a business sign, um, which is a wall marquee or canopy is one square feet in area for each linear foot of the face of the building. And the location is on the structure.
Okay, so I think the building is about, um, ninety feet long and this is approximately one-third of the building, so thirty feet.
And then it says, no sign shall be constructed, located in a manner that obstructs light or air into a building or otherwise interferes with the proper functioning. That's the traffic. That doesn't work.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't wanna be, okay, thank you.
For a sign painted on or applied to a building in the area shall be considered to include all letter wording and accompanying designs together with any background that may color different than the natural color or finished material of the building.
Does that describe a window?
Well, it says painted on or applied to a building. Can you argue that the wa- that the window is the building?
Yeah, I think it's part of the building. It, it, it's part of the interior facade.
So, and the, the alternative signage program, you know, just says that it's for developments containing more than ten thousand square feet of growth floor area, um, and that it shall, um, at a minimum contain the information required for the issuance of the sign permit. It's gotta be consistent with everything else. It's just that, um, it's, it's handled in a different way. Um, because there's more buildings, so. But as it's in the center of town, then, um, it needs to come before you guys.
So in essence, um, if, if this sign, if this size sign is allowed here, then it reasonably should be allowed um, in all other areas of town. Because the, the, the standards don't change. It's just the, the approval method changes.
Oh, oh, okay. So that's, that's what I'm unclear on. I don't know. I, I thought each, each, uh, so-called shopping center is defined in the regulations over ten thousand square feet. I thought they were sort of standalone entities and a certain, um, program was designed or, or negotiated to permit whatever zoning and ownership decided was appropriate. Now, maybe I, maybe I misunderstood how all this fits together. I must say I'm a little bit bewildered after having been here for two hours, listening to the technicalities you all have been discussing. And, um, I, I, I don't know what, what the best way to approach this really is.
We're all bewildered sometimes.
Well, John, I think you said the appropriate word, which is appropriate. I mean, we kinda broke the mold when we, uh, when we allowed the, um, Kent Land Trust sign on, on, on the bar, which is what, fifty square feet, hundred square feet?
Yes, all of that.
Yeah.
I mean, it does, let me, let me just ask this question. Maybe this doesn't fit into any regulation or or a criteria that you all would employ in considering this. But, I mean, you have a pretty good rendering there. Does it just look bad? I mean, does it look like a tire shop or something undesirable?
Well, I would ask you. Uh, John, a, another question. Does this sign, um, eh, fit within a, a universal or um, a cohesive signage program, um, in that shopping center?
Well, it's, uh, it is a variation. Uh, at most it could, uh, metastasize into three buildings, this and two others. Um, I, I think it's relatively new, new technology. Um, I think it's effective in delivering a message. I'm not particularly enamored of, of three by four pole signs. We're using less of them in the shopping center than we had before. Um, this is a one-dimensional sign. And I, I think in some ways less obtrusive than a three by four pole sign. It doesn't swing in the wind. Uh, you know, it, it has a lot of things going for it. It doesn't really fade. Uh, I, I think it is something that is an old concept rejuvenated and refined and in the hands of an artist, as I think Sasha is. She's been an art instructor for twenty years. Um, I think this works great. And, uh, I wouldn't mind having it on other buildings in the shopping center. Uh, I think it's, uh, I think it's looking forward. So, yes, I, I could see it in other applications in the shopping center where we have windows of this, this size. Unfortunately, we don't have that many.
I like the way it looks, John. Um, but do you need them in both windows?
Um, I, uh, I, I think it looks better that way. It's, there's a symmetry to the front of that building that it's, um, I think sort of requires the, the symmetry in the windows.
Does it, um, by having it in both windows, does it exceed the signage?
Oh, yes.
Oh, by, by a great deal. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
So that is the one thing, John, that I don't think is appropriate. Um, I, I, I find that sign completely appealing. The fact your car or the car is parked there and you don't show it there, I think was unfortunate.
Yes, yeah, I do too.
Is she on both sides, John?
She's in the middle, in the middle unit. There are three units in that building and she's in the middle unit.
Yeah, no, do, do, do both of those windows open up into her space?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
So it would look a little bit funny having the sign on one window and then not having the sign on the other one.
I, I think so. There's so many. Yeah, there are so many vertical members in the front of that. I mean, not, not a million, but it is, it, it is a very balanced uh, a period that, you know, those peelasters in the front. They're not great. I understand that, but, but they do define verticality. And, um, and, and a certain symmetry with the two lights the same way. So I, I do think it's kinda necessary to do it and just to keep the balance, to maintain the balance.
Could you make them smaller?
No, I, I, that's the artistic part about it. It, it, it fills the field. The, the window is the field and it, it uses the field as a sign. I mean, I don't think that's inappropriate.
I feel like we're asking some questions that aren't really on topic here. I, I think everybody looking at the sign, I think everybody thinks that the sign looks good. Question is how, excuse me, the question is how how we approve this and if we approve this, how that affects everyone else who wants to put up a sign like this in the town? And that, and that's because I think this, that, I think it looks great. I think it should be exactly that size and on both windows. And I'm just, I'm just wondering how we, how we, how we approve it and how that where that's gonna come back to us. That's my, that's my question.
Yeah, I, you know, this, this is, I go through this kinda all the time. I don't understand, I mean, the, the presumption is that it's bad if it's not in the regulations. And, and if I were king, I would say, here's a good, here's a new idea. It's a good one. Let's not, let's not throw it out because or not let it, not let it in because we didn't think of it when we invented these regulations. Let's embrace it if it's good.
I don't disagree. I, I don't, I, I think it, I think we have to as a commission, I mean, I think everybody's looking at this, John, and, and saying, wow, these look great. And then for me, my next thought is, okay, so I wanna approve this. But I have to think about next month or three months from now. When everyone else in town looks at that and we have five more places that wanna come and put these up. And is that okay? Maybe it's okay. Maybe somebody else's window is bigger than that. They wanna, they wanna put up instead of a, a twenty square foot sign, it's a thirty square foot sign. Or, you know, I'm, I'm just not, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of what, so where does this? Where does this, as a, as, as regulating it for the town? Where, where, are, are we digging ourselves a hole?
Where is it?
Where's this coming back to us in a bad way? Are we doing something that, that all of a sudden everybody's crying foul?
Well, I, you know, I, I, I would say if somebody else wanted to do it and if the design is crisp and it's, you know, it's in good taste, it's well-executed, I would say by all means, let them do it.
We, we unfortunately can't regulate taste.
Let, let's face it, I mean.
Oh, I can't. I mean, the only thing that I can regulate is the size, the height, the lighting and the location.
Right, yeah.
But not everyone is in a, in the alternative signage program.
That's true. So this would really, right now, this would only, we can approve this and this really only has implication for for the alternative, alternative sign program in the Kent Green. It doesn't even affect the alternative signage program in the Kent Village Barnes. Is that correct? Donna, are they?
Um, I don't think it affects, no, I think it does affect the, the Village Barnes and it affects, affects the town center.
Yeah, I think anybody in the alternative signage for.
Okay.
Well, you know, I've been in the Barnes lately and, um, you know, they have some huge signs there that are far larger than this.
They do have some very, very big signs there. And Donna, how do we go about approving this if we're gonna? Do we have to make a change? I mean, is this something that we, as a commission, look at and say, well, will we approve this modification or is this something that we have to change a regulation to to allow? What do we have to do?
You just.
No, I don't think we have to change it.
No, you just need to make a motion to approve it as, as part of the alternative signage program.
Okay.
So do I hear that motion?
I am. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna make that motion that we approve, that we approve this sign to the, um, alternative, uh, sign program.
Any more discussion?
I guess I just wanted to add that in this circumstance, the windows are there and the advertising fits the circumstance. So I think it's totally appropriate. And I think John has always followed the spirit, um, of our regulation allowing some creativity and flexibility in, in larger congregations of stores. There's more changeover. But I would hate to see advertising dictate window styles as people replace lights, replace windows that have lights and, and maybe are a little more old-fashioned and probably in keeping with the town so that they can fill the field of larger and larger sheets of glass. So I just think we need to keep that in mind as a precedent. Um, in, in this circumstance, it's fine, but, um, I, I would hate to see the town fill with big, huge windows that have decals that fully cover them.
Well, they'd have to go through our judicial review for that.
They would.
Yeah.
But we're, you know, we're establishing a, a precedent here that could certainly be argued.
Right.
I, I agree with you, Daryl. I'd be, think the sign is terrific, but I would be very concerned if I'm driving through the center of Kent and I see the big windows in the town center facing Main Street with something huge as you're describing. And I think those are the only three places we really have to be concerned with it, but, um, that's my feeling as well.
So we have a motion and a second. Um, shall we vote on this then? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three. Alice is a no. Daryl's a no, or, no, Daryl's a yes.
Daryl.
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Three, four, five, six. So we've got one, two, three.
That's everybody.
Four, five, six. I know, I need seven, right? I've got Daryl. Um, David, Adam, Mark, Daryl.
David, Adam, Mark, Daryl, Wes, Alex, and Karen. We're good.
Yep.
You counted both Darrells.
I counted. Alan down.
The other Daryl, too. So.
So it's unanimous.
Yeah, motion carry, John.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, six B two, Robert and Colleen Endorff, change of use.
Yeah, um, he doesn't, he doesn't. Understand how to do indoor, uh, how to do Zoom, so he asked me if I would just speak up. Um, he owns the um, the building across the street from the Kent Green House. Um, it used to be the woodworking business. Um, he's in the process of selling his house up on um, Studio Hill Road. And they're converting that house um, that the business does not just, is it just not woodworking now? It's one of the woodworking companies. Thank you.
Yeah, moves it down to hardboats.
Yes, so he's converting that building from a commercial use back into a residential use, and they will be moving in there full time.
So it's returning to a house.
It's returning to a house.
How nice.
Yeah. So that's really, you know, that's 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 the crux of it.
It's really a great building and a great house.
Yeah.
Yes.
But when you're in it, it's it's still a house, it's just has a lot of a lot of furniture in it and.
Right.
Well, not anymore. It's gonna have different furniture in it now.
Yeah.
So I just need a motion to approve that.
I make that motion to approve it. Where is it? It's.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carry. Yeah, they've that's um. That's good. And I guess the next application, six B three is along the same line. Bakery restaurant.
Yep. So Anna is here. Um, Anna, do you want to um, explain what it is that um, you're doing?
Sure, I'd love to. Hi, Donna. Hi, everybody. Uh, so I have rented uh, the space formerly known as Frank. Um, and I hope to poke a little hole between the two buildings where there used to be one. Um, and just use what was the storefront of Frank, uh, just to put a few extra tables. I think we would end up with. Nine tables of two in there, which could then be sort of moved around. Um, to accommodate larger parties, but about twenty twenty seats in that front space, and we'd continue to use. The kitchen area, as it has been used sort of for catering, and they have a couple of women doing a co-op. Kitchen in the back. Um, so I would just like to use the front. Uh, where Frank had his counter space, and he had a couple of tables in there pre-COVID. Turn that into seating for Kingsley, and then also use his front patio, obviously, in the summertime when the weather permits. Um, for further outdoor seating for for the restaurant as well.
How how was it not already a restaurant when Frank was?
I I don't know. It's a bakery, I think, and I guess the use of uh, was slightly different in the books. Uh, it was stunning to me that, but that here, that's fine. I'm happy happy to see you all tonight. Yeah.
I'm sure you followed everything with bated breath.
Yeah. Yes, I've been dragging the iPad around to my kids' rooms as I put them to bed tonight and. Yeah, so I'm happy to answer any any other questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward, just. Uh, seating in the front, hope to use what he had, the same exact tables out in the front on the patio there for. For our guests and um, putting some pretty new uh. Peter Kirkley's original tables in the in the front area there for seating.
So Anna, how many uh, tables are you talking about?
I believe we're gonna be able to fit nine small square tables for parties of two. Um, I think five along one wall, three along the other, and two down the center, I believe, but that is. Um, assuming that COVID calms down, and we don't have to distance everything quite like we are.
So that's eighteen additional people.
Yeah, yeah, we may be able to, you know, if we have a larger party. Uh, sort of cram them all together to accommodate something like a catering type of a thing in there, but uh, on a regular basis, no more than no more than. The nine parties of of two.
But you have to note, though, Anna, that um, you're gonna be giving up that little um dining room, because that's where the door is gonna be. Going through. So you're gonna give up some seats on the main restaurant, and then she'll be picking those up on in the new area.
That's exactly right. Thank you, Donna. Yeah, we're gonna um, put the new entryway into this space. In that existing sort of little gallery, right when you first walk in straight ahead where nobody likes to sit. Um, so there currently are four, eight, ten seats. Twelve pre-COVID, um, ten seats in there now. So we're really only gaining, you know, maximum of ten. Seats in the indoor space. Thank you.
What will you do with the Frank sign?
Uh, hopefully, it won't say shut twice so often.
Just had to ask.
Yeah, we'll have to, I guess we'll have to do a little little awning work, and the sign that's on, I don't think we'll use his uh, post sign that's that's out there. Because I don't really want to encourage anyone to think that there is an entryway there, um, because we want to direct. Traffic still the exact same way, and I think we'll probably actually put one of those um. Uh, you know, those bars that you can't actually physically open that door to enter that space. So I I don't, we won't put any signage up where Frank's sign was. Um, simply to discourage people from entering through that door, if that makes sense.
So Donna, is there any parking issues uh, to discuss as an increase in occupancy?
No, because it's really not, because she's gonna be giving up the seats inside the main restaurant.
Right.
So it's pretty much gonna, I I don't want to say it's gonna be a wash, but it's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be really, it's not gonna affect the requirement, and I don't even think we ever actually discussed seating. Uh, or parking because they're on Main Street.
Well, I think if anything, I mean, the the good thing is slightly good is that uh, you know, most of our business is at night. Um, we're only open at this point during the day, one day a week. Um, the rest of our business is at night, I think, when most of the streets are pretty well cleared out. Um, anyway, hopefully, that'll be a a bonus for people in town parking.
You know, if if one day. This town has a problem with parking.
Yeah.
Well, that's just great.
So that's the story.
Somebody like to make a application of a. The application.
Make a motion that we approve application zero five twenty-two C and a gallon for. Rennie LLC fourteen North Main Street, map nineteen, block forty-two, lot twenty-seven, change of use from bakery to restaurant.
I will second that.
Okay.
All in favor, say that. Raise your hand. Okay.
Daryl, why are you up here?
Who?
Daryl's been, he's been up. On the top level. I don't know what you guys see on your screen. But I've got all of you in the center and then like guests along the top, and that's where Daryl was.
Maybe because I came back in.
Oh, maybe. That could be.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, motion carried, Anna.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay, six B point four. Um, so this is just a discussion um, in in preparation, Donna.
Yeah. Um, I I didn't want to go into the um, the public hearing when we changed the regulation. Um, and you guys not really understanding or knowing what it is that you want to do. So um, this has to do with the outdoor dining. Um, as you remember, the outdoor dining had been adjusted during COVID underneath all the executive orders that had been issued by. Um, Governor Lamont, that's going away as of um, March thirty-first. And so we need to change our regulations in order to reflect. The um, the new um, regulation or legislation that had been put through in the public act. So basically, what they what what they've said to us is that um, outdoor dining now has to be considered an accessory use. And you really can't require it like we. We are, we permit um. By site plan up to sixteen seats and by special permit more than sixteen seats. So though that those two sections are gonna have to be removed from um, zoning regulations. We're not gonna, we are no longer going to be allowed to regulate them according to that. Um. So the first thing that I was recommending is a change to the definition, which is that it says. Establishments that serve food and beverages to customers only when seated at tables or counters and where at least. Fifty percent of the customer seats are located within an enclosed building. So my question is, 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 I have a lot of questions, as you could see them. Do you want to remove that? Do you want to put a cap or a cap on how much outdoor dining someone can have? So like in Anna's case, you know, she's gonna be able to have outdoor dining on her front porch, on the side. Um, entrance, and then now in front of Frank's. Um, do you want to put a cap on the number of those seats? Um, if you look at Wilson's, they are a prime example. They are a bakery, delicatessen, coffee shop. They're only allowed to have fifteen seats inside. So if you look at this regulation, that means they can only have seven seats outside, and I think they have twenty. I have, I think they have twenty in the front, and I think they have fifteen in the back. So um. They have definitely, you know, surpassed the amount of of seating that they are allowed to have. So it's just, these are some of the things that you can include. In the regulations, if you want to, with as far as far as regulating the regulation. You can tell them, OK, you can only have outdoor dining from this time to this time. That you can't, you know, you, we would like it to have um, lighting, um, some kind of screening. Um, definition of the actual binding area, um, you know. Do you want to regulate signage? Because, you know, a lot of people will get their umbrellas from Heineken. Um, and and, you know, put them up there, and that's really advertising for Heineken. Do you, you want to regulate that? Yeah.
Could this, real quickly, you you would respect the number of seats we can or cannot regulate?
No, um, you can if you want to.
But so what does the state statute require us to change then?
The state statute requires how you permit it.
Oh, okay.
So we re.
But.
Right, so it's it's now becomes um, actually an accessory as a right use.
But we could say as a right, you can have two seats. So it's an accessory use without limitation?
Right.
Without limitation.
Right. Uh, I know you can limit if you want to.
No, no, but the state is saying it's without limitation.
Let me look at it again and make sure. I don't want to answer if I'm wrong.
I guess I don't quite understand if it's as of right. There's no formula or control or anything for. For how we would give them more or less seats. I I guess that's where I'm I'm confused. So what exactly we can control?
One of the things that I think that came out of. The whole COVID thing. That was a nice thing, if you could say it like that. It is that allowing. The restaurants and cafes to have outside seating, I think, has been. Having more to have more outside seating than they had before has been a nice thing for our town. And when you, you know, we're we're, we really are. A tourist destination, we want to be that, we want people to come to our town. And on those summer days when you drive in and there are all these people sitting around outside, that looks great.
It's not that.
Want to come here.
Yeah.
It and I don't, I don't want to overregulate. People from being able to put tables outside and have outside seating.
Um. Yes, and I would agree. I think my question was what we can and can't.
Right, right.
Not what we should and shouldn't.
No, it's, it says, one of the things that you can you can do is limit the amount of outdoor dining to a percentage of indoor seats.
And I assume there's some overriding fire department or other regulations based on the size of the lot or. Something along those lines that put absolute maximums on.
Yes, it's actually the fire marshal who determines how many seats can be put on the inside of a restaurant.
I was saying on the outside of the restaurant.
Um, at one point in time, the fire marshal did get involved with the regulation of how many seats could be on the outside, but that was based. On his work with co with um, Torrenton Area Health and or Health Department um, during COVID. So let's just say that at one point in time, um, the Fife and Joe had put up a tent. So Stan got involved because of the tent, but he also got involved because if the tent was gonna have three uh, two sides closed. Then there was a restriction on the number of tents, a number of seats. Because you had to make sure that the air could circulate through there. So he was involved to a certain extent. He was involved on the inside as well to make sure that people were separated by six feet. So the fire marshal during the COVID portion of this was involved in that. I don't think he's involved in it now.
It just seems like if you if you attach your number of seats to a percentage of. What's available inside, it doesn't account for anything about the actual geography, sorry, geometry of the outdoor space. If it might be a restaurant has that is small, but has a large, you know, Kent Pizza Garden with the. They have obviously huge outdoor space, whereas somebody on Main Street has maybe a tiny outdoor space. A regulation fit for one wouldn't necessarily be fit for the other.
Right.
And uh, can I just ask, unlike in urban areas like New York City. They can't put tables into the street? And they can't block the sidewalks? Is that correct?
They cannot.
The side.
I think now what's going to happen is it can't, it can definitely cannot block sidewalks. That's number one. If they wanted to put um, tables on the street, they have to go through the DOT. At some points during COVID, they, some of the the cities like New Haven, um, they were actually closing down the streets and letting people put all their tables out there. Um, they were just, they became pedestrian streets, and they put up barriers, um, and the state was OK with that, and so was the DOT. Um, but I don't.
Seven as a pedestrian boulevard, it's gonna work too well.
But we could say no to that.
Right. I don't think anybody's gonna want to put tables up on Route seven. I don't think they would let them put tables up on Route seven.
But I don't think we should have tables on our sidewalks that would impede.
And you can't.
Pedestrians to be able to walk.
Right.
So Donna, my question to you is, um, is this something that has to happen quickly? Or not?
Yeah, I would like to be able to have a regulation on the books by the next meeting. Because it actually expires March thirty-first, and the new, everything new that kicks in on April first.
Right, there there's a tremendous amount of substance here.
Can we ask?
That that's why I wanted to let you guys at least read some of the questions that I had. So that when it's time to actually write the regulation, or, you know, we can just say, OK, fine, you know what? We do want to um, enclose the outdoor area through fencing or planters. You know, like, but like they did in front of the Kent Coffee Shop. Uh, you know, Sharon put up those big, what are they, the horse, the horse troughs? And she filled them with planters, you know, um, so, you know. Because of the way that her parking is set up, that was a requirement, so it's a safety issue. On, so you might want to put something in there like that.
Can we consult a? Um. If I can.
Fun.
Our Glenn. On this.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I mean, we're gonna write a regulation, and it seems like it's a fairly involved. Regulation, we could get his. His input, take it from there.
Yeah, this is not something that's gonna happen next month. I don't think. Uh, no, March tenth is gonna be hell.
Well, if we can get the right thing written from Glenn, at least we can.
Yeah, we we can start the process, yeah.
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 Ellen had a question.
Yeah, hi, it's Ellen Cristel. I just wanted to say, um. One thing that I've noticed about all of our restaurants. one thing that I've noticed about all of our restaurants on Main Street is that everybody has a very defined space within the front of their buildings. So in, in that itself, it limits each space as to how many tables they're allowed to have. Um, so we have this sort of self-regu- regulated thing in place already, um, just as a note for the way we are set up as a community.
Yeah, that, that's very true.
So Donna, when, when, when some, when the fire department or whoever it was, you said, uh, went to the Fife and told them how many seats they could have. Is it based on the size of a chair and per square feet, or? In other words, based on what Ellen said, maybe you don't do it by the number of tables or chairs, but you do it by s- area.
And Stan does it by, Stan does it by area, by the square footage. He can tell you how many people will fit inside there. There's a formula that he uses. But Stan, what, he went to the Fife, because the Fife had put the tent up, and the Fife, the tent was governed by COVID, so he was there looking at the sides of the tent. And whether or not they were open or closed, that would drive the amount of tables that could go in there because they were looking at the flowing of the fresh air. So that was just COVID related.
Right, so.
But, but, but it, but I'm saying maybe that concept applies to what we're talking about here. I mean, that depending on, based on what Ellen said, let's say you have twenty square feet or two hundred square feet, your number of tables would depend on that.
I don't know, I don't think he.
It wouldn't be the same for everybody.
Well, that would be something that you guys would have to decide to do. That wouldn't be something that Stan would do. Stan looks at it for internal.
No, I, I understand that, but if we're trying to figure out how to formulate this, you know, instead of saying it's based on how many seats are inside, maybe it should be based on the area outside.
Mm-huh. Yeah, I mean, you could do that if you want.
I mean, I don't know.
This, this is a very complicated, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is a big deal.
Uh-huh.
And I, I think the other thing too, we have to think about is, like during COVID, Anna shared Ellen's porch. Is that going to, you know, are we gonna allow neighbors to to share space?
No, I, we can also, you know, going on something that, that Ellen said, which is, you know, everyone has a limited amount of space outside. It's not just i- it's very hard to, and there's, they're limited to how many seats they could put out there anyway. Each, each restaurant and each bakery, and maybe we don't need to do much for regulation. Maybe we can let the vendors figure this out, and if it starts, if we start to see that there's a problem, then we need to relook at this and and start putting some kind of limits on there.
Which is why a percentage of the occupancy is not, is not a bad direction.
Well, so, but to a place where that wouldn't work, Wes, is that, is, is, is Wilson's, which they have a very limited amount of seating inside. They have far more seating outside. They, they, they exceeded it by a lot. And, but it, it worked for them because they can kinda loop around the back there, and they had plenty of room to put more.
Right.
So I don't know that a percentage of, of the number of seats you have inside for the seats that you have outside are, i- is a good comparison, because also each, you know, different restaurants have a different amount of space outside. Some put four seat, four tables out there, and some might be able to put ten tables out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, look at Swift. I mean, they have a front seating area in the sort of the front patio garden. Wh- what do we care how many tables they squeeze in there? It's up to them. I mean, as long as they don't encroach on the sidewalk, why do we need to regulate it?
We don't care because they planned it that way. They planned that enclosure, which was a very clever way of expand, spanning your seat, but, but it was well done.
Right, but as long as, even if they didn't do it as nicely as Swift does, as long as they don't encroach on the sidewalk and block pedestrian traffic, why don't we just leave it up to them? How many seats do they wanna have?
It doesn't, it doesn't behoove any restaurant to jam in so many seats that people are uncomfortable.
Right, yeah, it seems like whatever regulation we're gonna do is gonna be a non, non-seat-county things.
Right. Is, is it worth consulting the chamber on something like this?
If I can say one more thing, I, of, just as an example, as, as you're talking about this, I know that um, during COVID, Frank told Anna at Kingsley's that she would, was welcome to use his seats as well as mine, because we, obviously, she was sitting as many people outside as possible. She tried it for a couple of weeks and just said her, her kitchen couldn't handle it. Her staff couldn't handle that many tables, and so she said, thank you, but no, thank you. Um, so again, you know, we have, we have really successful, great eateries in our town, and one of the reasons is, I think, that they're run really well. And in Anna's example, she knew that she could not take on more than her, her kitchen can handle. And so she didn't use Frank's. So I think any, any, you know, good business person is not gonna put eighty-five seats out there because they won't be able to serve them, and then they'll, they'll go out of business because they've done a crummy job.
Right. My recommendation would be to change the, the regulation by taking out and where at least fifty percent of the customer seats are located within an enclosed building. Remove sections forty-one, thirty-three point three and forty-one, thirty-four point four. Uh, I'm sorry, forty-one, thirty-four point one, um, and, um, because we can't do that now anyway, so remove those. And let's see what happens with this summer coming up. Um, and let's see how the restaurants manage themselves, and if they're not able to manage themselves, then I think you could come back in and start looking at some of the other things. You know, if we get complaints that people are open until midnight and they're playing the music, then, you know, then I think it's something that we have to start looking at and maybe, maybe regulate if we need to. But, you know, I didn't regulate anything during COVID. I, I wouldn't because I understood that the restaurants and the businesses on Main Street needed as much space as they could get in order to continue to operate. And so where Wilson's was making my blood pressure go up, I, they seem to be handling it, and I understood that it was a startup business, so um, I backed off. I think, um, I, I think that that would be the way to go. I think it would be the easiest way to go. I don't think you're shirking your duties at this point in time. Um, I, I think that it would meet the state requirement of what we at least have to do on a minimal level. And then you can add to it based on how things are being taken care of and how, and how they're being done. You know, the only thing that I can see that you might wanna handle, you might wanna take care of would just be, um, you know, putting in like enclosures in situations like Sharon's. Um, because they actually pull right into the parking lot, right, aiming right at where those tables are, and that's needed because of safety reasons. I think everybody else is gonna end up really doing the right thing. They've shown that they did that over the past two years. I don't, I don't expect anything different, but I'm gonna knock on wood at the same time and say, I'll be retiring in September, and then it'll be in your lap. So um, that would be my recommendation, and I think you would be able to get it taken care of, um, so that we're in line with the new legislation. But it's, it's your call.
I like what Donna said. I think we don't need to regulate it right now. I think it will be self-regulating, and we can always step in and regulate it. We can always step in and and add some regulations, but let's go the other way. And if something stayed open a little later right now would be nice, because you can't eat after eight-thirty in Kent.
All right, so, but this has to go to a public hearing, right?
Yes, yeah, so we're all set up for the March tenth meeting. Um, and then at that point in time, I will have, um, the resolution prepared of what needs to be um, done as far as, you know, what's gonna be taken out. Um, and you know, what the regulation will look like at the very end, so that, you know, girls, I just, I didn't wanna have to have you guys talk about this during the public hearing, when we have this time to kind of go over and think about, you know, some of the stuff that you can do based on the new legislation.
Well, you, you put in a lot of stuff to think about. That was part of the problem.
Right, right, because those are all the things that was in the new legislation.
I know, I read through all of it. It was a lot.
So, I mean, it's up to you guys, you know, it's, it's your final say at this point in time.
Well, I don't disagree with Adam that, um, you know, if we keep it simple, we don't have to overregulate this. Um, um, I do like the fact that it's limited as a percentage, um, which is, um, in a response to the size of the place.
So you wanna keep that in then? You wanna keep that in? The only, my only thing is, who's gonna regulate that?
I don't think we wanna regulate.
Couldn't hear you.
Well, well, that was your recommendation to change the definition, right?
It's a definition and take out.
And where?
Take out that, take out the, uh, the percentage limitation.
Oh, I, I, I beg your pardon.
Uh, which I agree with. Taking it out. I'll, I'll move, uh, Donna's suggestion.
I'm sorry, I, my mis- my connection went out there. What are you gonna take out?
The limitation that you can't, uh, have more than fifty percent of your inside space as outside space.
Okay.
So I'll prepare the resolution and everything, um, for the public hearing meeting.
There's two things, because you're gonna take out forty-one, thirty-three.
Yes.
Three and forty-one, thirty-four point one.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll look at it next month.
At which point in time you can actually accept it and then, um, or not, or change it, you know, whatever is, is your wish.
I'll call you back, Gordon.
And then we'll, um, we'll make the change to the regulation at that point in time.
Okay, um, is Matt still here?
Yes.
Yeah, I came back, Wes. I needed a, yeah, I got it.
So, so you and I, uh, did meet with ARB, um, a couple of months ago. And I guess this is what has generated this, and we, we said we'd come back to them. Um, um, there's, there's a lot here. So, uh, are you suggesting that we act on this, or are you suggesting we go back to ARB with some of these to, um, to consider?
Well, um, so just to be brief, and, and at, at the, at the risk of having Ellen stay on the meeting all this time and, and not to really discuss it, um, I would suggest, there's a, there's a, there's a couple of things that I think that we should change as um, as relates to the, so just the, the naming of things in the regulations, so that, so that it's easier to tie back um, what the regulations say to the application process that's listed on the website. Um, so those are the things that are, those are the things that are in red, sort of, down at, down the bottom third of the, of this document. Um, the other, the, the other, the, the first part of this is, is how we have assigned the, the, the responsibilities to the Architecture Review Board. Um, and then the last piece, which begins at the, at the end of page one, and then at the first page, it really is almost verbatim, just changing the, the tense around for, to, to come up with a, 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 a list of considerations for the Architecture Review Boards. The Architecture Review Board, they had an application in front of them, they could go through these, one through twenty-seven items and say yes or no. And that would help them make a decision as to whether they wanted to recommend to accept the application um, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, so that's, that's, this is, uh, this is a somewhat of a draft of what I think that could be a tool for the Architecture Review Board to use in fulfilling the charge that we've given them. Um, that being said, I think, um, I don't think that the Architecture Review Board's got anything coming up on their docket, certainly that I know about between now and our next meeting. Um, I know that, that would push this towards the, the, the March meeting, which is going to be, um, crazy. So maybe we just, we table this until, um, the April meeting, when we've all had a chance to take a look at it. We can make a quick decision as to whether we wanna present this to the ARB for them to use and then be done with it.
They do, they will have something, um, for their March meeting, um, that, somebody came in yesterday to pick up an application.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, they do have a, um, uh, their, their own plan in place now. Anyway, this is just supplemental to that.
Correct.
So I, I agree that we've got a lot to consider in the next, um, month. I think, Matt, that would be, that would be terrific. If we come back in April and revisit this.
Um, yes, and again, that's, that, that's, I, I, I don't mind doing that. It's just, it's, so you're trying to react to a, a request from, from the group that we've charged with helping us.
Exactly, exactly.
So I'll make a motion that we table this in to the April meeting.
Okay, thanks for sticking around, Ellen.
I was actually here for Anna, so this is fine. But we are, I just, I, I'll throw my two cents, and we actually have, um, room on the ARB for two new members, and as, uh, with your help, if we can really help define how, um, how can we, we can work more smoothly, it would be wonderful. But I think a lot of the things the ARB has done over the years has really been positive. Um, but if there's anybody who'd like to participate in that, um, let us know. Thank you.
Terrific, thanks, Ellen.
Do you want me to put something out on the town's website to bring to people in, or do you wanna wait until?
Sure.
Or do you wanna wait until this is, until this has been finalized?
I think you should wait.
Well, I, I think we can put it out, because I'm sure that Frank, I don't know if Frank has put his, his resignation in yet, but I'm sure he will.
He did.
He's sort of out of Kent now, anyway.
Yeah, he did, okay, cool.
So.
So right now, you only have three members.
Three great members, but three members, yeah.
Yeah, very, three very strong members, so, um.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, we, we lost, you lost Steve Penner to the ZBA. Right, and then Frank moved out.
And I think, I think personality-wise, he's really good for ZBA, so that worked out just fine. So that's good. But, okay, thanks.
Okay. That's really strange.
But we had a motion. Was there a second on that?
Not yet. Thanks, Mark. And that's to table it until April.
Right, yeah, right. Okay.
Vote on it?
Oh, yeah.
Ball of favor?
Yep. Motion carried. Thanks, thanks, Ellen.
I got your back.
Okay, uh, six B six.
Yeah. I put that on there, um, because at the, um, the March tenth meeting, there's going to be a public hearing um, for the discussion of opting out of Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine um, with regard to the accessory apartments and the parking requirements. So once the Planning and Zoning Commission has made the determination that they want to opt out, which they have to do by two-thirds vote, um, this then gets referred to the, uh, to the Board of Selectmen, and based on, um, the complexities of the Board of Selectmen's agenda. the complexities of the Board of Selectmen's agendas, I thought that it might be a good idea for them to be attending this meeting so that they are part of the discussion. So that when they have to have their own discussion to opt out, they will already have all the information that they need in order to opt out. I just, I know it's, it's budget season and I know there's a lot of things on the agendas. And, and I just, it's something that needs to be done. So I just thought this would be the best way to handle getting them the information that they will need. Part of a discussion.
A great idea and very much appreciate it.
Okay. I think that was Jean, but I'm not quite sure.
It was.
Saw Town Hall. That's, that was a good sign.
Okay. So anyway, I, I, you know, it's, it's, it's up to you guys to decide how you want to handle that. But that's, that is my recommendation. Just to make it a smooth transition. So.
But we're gonna hear this March tenth.
Yes, there's this public hearing that's settled, that's scheduled. You guys first have to go to a public hearing to opt out. Then the selectmen have to make the determination as to whether or not they want to opt out. And then we have to do another meeting after that to actually add in the legal wording that was written by Mike to the regulations in the two separate sections that he had noted. Which will be on the public information. So that will, that will be April. Maybe May, probably May. Because I need to get the selectmen to opt out as well. And once they do, then I have to schedule the public hearing to change the regulations. To have the two paragraphs that Mike Cisco wrote for us.
So do we need a motion to adopt Donna's suggestion of extending a formal invitation?
I, I think that, you know, I mean, I think it just makes it cleaner. So.
All right. So move.
All right. So Mark moved and Jean has her hand raised.
So. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just from a planning perspective, would that, would it make sense for us to, in order to keep you guys on your timeline for us to do it at a April, one of the two April meetings, Port of Slakman meetings?
No, I was hoping that you would be able to do it on the third Thursday because we meet on the second. You guys meet on the third. So if we're meeting on March tenth, and it would be on the agenda for March seventeenth.
Okay.
And then that would give me enough time to do what I need to do sexually to get a public hearing up and running for May.
Gotcha. Okay. Great. Thanks.
And I think I'll have to, Jean, if all three of you are gonna be in attendance, Joyce might have to warn that as a meeting for you guys. But I'll, I'll talk to Joyce about that separately.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that we do, but we can, yeah, we can discuss.
Yeah, I just, I don't want anything to go wrong, especially if this is gonna be a public hearing. And it has to all be legally done correctly. So I'll chat with Joyce tomorrow on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
So let's keep moving on here.
All right. So Mark, well, Mark made a motion.
Oh.
To extend it. I need a second.
Seconded it.
Adam, thank you. And a vote.
Any more discussion? Say hi. Motion carried. So we'll hear this on the tenth.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Staff report, any?
Well, you've got, is that, is that me? Oh, yeah. Just as an FYI, I will be out of the office next week for a couple of days. The Thursday and Friday. Hope to be back on Tuesday. So there's a notice on the door. It's on the town's website. My emails will be updated. I will have access to emails and my phone messages will also be changed. So. It's just for two days. Hopefully, I don't think it'll be any longer than that.
So you don't need coverage or anything like that?
Yeah. No, I think it'll be fine.
Okay. Report of officers and committees. I guess POC, the Subcommittee.
Is that Matt? Yeah, Wes. So, so we are working our way through the, through the documents that, that Glenn is preparing and has prepared. We've, we made it through one of those documents. We've made it through several of them. Booklet number six, we reviewed. We're gonna review booklet number seven on Tuesday. And then at Tuesday, on Tuesday, we believe that we're going to try to schedule a public informational meeting to go over our progress so far.
Well, good.
Yeah, that's it. That's all I have unless, unless Mark, you've got something to add or anybody, any other commissioners, commission members. I, I would just tell you that I know I said I'd be at that Tuesday meeting, but if my youngest son's team does well this weekend, they'll go to the state championship on Tuesday and I'm going to miss the meeting.
So, so forget it. That's right.
But we'll see. We'll see how it goes. You know, they gotta win hot before that happens.
Great. So housing plans steering committee?
Let's see. We, we've been reviewing the results of this survey. A lot of interesting information there. We will be doing a public event, I believe.
Twenty-third.
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 Yep. So the twenty-third, there should be flyers going out to various places. We'll be collecting feedback from people walking through the plan. We have a little presentation we'll be doing. The work survey has gone out, you know, for people who work, but don't necessarily live in Kent, or trying to gather information from that. After we do the informational session, then I think we'll settle into the, the writing part of it and, and then prepare for probably in, I guess, June or July. There'll probably be another public event to review the draft. That's making progress.
June or July? Don't you have to have it in by July?
Technically, it didn't seem like Justin was overly concerned if we're a month or two late.
It's that same impression that I got. Yeah. So if we let OPM know that we're not going to meet the deadline, but that we're working on it and we can show progress. That's what we've been told, that there, there is no OPM police that's going to come. And there's no stick on the, on the legislation. Meaning there's no funding, you know, attached to it that if we don't have that put in. And the group felt that it was pretty important to go through that process.
Like, yeah, it didn't seem like we could get through everything and actually complete it on that date. So I think we're, we're expecting when that be a month or two late. But other than that, we're in good shape.
I know that there were a couple of emails that were going back and forth. Am I supposed to be asking Mike something?
The question was specific to what the, what the percentage of affordable housing number we would need to be exempt from eight thirty G, I believe, or J, whichever the enforcement one is.
Eight thirty G.
G. So we'd asked Mike if he could figure out what that number was for Kent, just for informational purposes. We're not sure it's gonna actually meaningfully impact the plan. I think it'd be good for us to document it so we know at what point we'd be, we would not be subject to the issues of so on attaching affordable housing to development as a way to bypass zoning regulations.
Okay. All right. I will send that out tomorrow. I couldn't, I didn't quite understand them. I got an email from Justin and then I had an email from you and I was completely out of line.
Apparently it's approximately ten percent, but the specifics are buried in legislation that he, he really needs to review for us.
Okay. Okay. I will, I'll, I'll send him an email either tomorrow or Monday.
Yeah, he can reach out to Justin or I with, if he needs more details, but I suspect he'll know what we're talking about.
Okay.
I miss anything else?
Nope. Let's, let's move on and, and get through this.
But I love all your company so much.
So, so other communications and correspondence, any comments on the permits? And certificates? I, I had none. I enjoy the two of those were mine. So that, that's good. Monthly financial.
I just want to say you can withdraw the letter that I had submitted because you already had that conversation about food trucks.
Okay.
Just to let you know, number nine C.
Okay. Thanks, Alyssa.
Being in here all this time for this?
I have been. You know, hey, you know, gotta, gotta follow through on stuff.
Wow.
So.
Well, I hope everybody read the letter, though.
I did read it.
Beating that dead horse to the ground, but you guys solved the problem on the food truck. So I am very grateful. Thank you.
Great. Terrific. Donna, that was, nine B was what you were adding?
Yeah, just to change the, all the X's to January. This came in this morning. So, on, I figured, let me just throw it in the packet now. And we're at seventy-four point three percent of our direct projected revenue, which was twenty thousand dollars, which is really pretty good. I think we have only spent half of our budget as far as the general government and the compensation. And that's really because we haven't had an assistant. But, you know, it's just, this is just the normal budget. Monthly stuff. Nothing, nothing earth-shattering or you know, to be worried about.
Terrific. Nine C is checked. Nine D. That's the quarterly letter.
Right.
Yeah, that, the last part of that was interesting.
Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, very.
You know, I, I'm wondering if it's gonna actually flow over into Connecticut. We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it makes perfect sense when you really think about it because it does become a commercial establishment in the residential zone. So. But I just, that's why I highlighted it because I thought it was pretty interesting.
Do you think it's the Airbnb thing is what provoked it?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. It is. Yeah. Yeah.
Which one? What are we referring to here?
If you look at the, the quarterly newsletter.
Yeah.
And if you go to the last page, I highlighted.
Hold down. Here we go.
Yeah, the short-term rental is not permitted as a use of a single-family dwelling. And this is in Massachusetts.
Right. Be a lot of disappointed people around here.
Well, it's absolutely oriented towards reducing or improving housing stock by not having so much of it end up in Airbnb. Scenario. So we get it.
Yep. Yeah. And then the next one is just the letter from the, the testing of the water for Bullsbridge Golf Club.
I can't believe we're still monitoring this.
Well, this is the last one. If you look at the paragraph, the next, the next one will be till December of twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
So.
Terrific.
That's it.
All right. Do, do we have anything in the executive session?
Um, yes, I would like to go into executive session.
Okay.
So.
I move that we move to executive session.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Okay, we're in executive session at ten twenty-six.
Okay, I'm gonna pause the recording.
So there's no action then thirteen, fourteen, fifteen?
It's the normal action, you know, that I keep you informed and follow the attorneys. I actually have that. I just copy it from month to month. On. We'll move this. So I need a motion for thirteen, which it says, you know, Mr. Stones or Miss Stones, they'll move to follow the recommendations of the attorney and have Donna Hayes report back to the commission as this matter progresses.
Can we make the same motion for thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen all at once?
And I can second all of them.
I just did that.
All right. So we're gonna do Adam and David for all three.
For all three, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
Anybody want to discuss that?
No.
Favor? All right.
A little punchy and dirty tonight.
It's, it's done. And I, I know I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Move. Let's do it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.